I'm going to take that as an affirmative. All right. Welcome, everyone. Before we stand, we have a special little treat here tonight. Welcome to the Bristol Town Council meeting of April 29th. And Lucas Olano from PAC Six is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on up, Lucas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Nice job, Lucas.
Thank you.
How could the rest of the meeting go poorly?
Right.
Thank you. All set, Lou?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, the first item on this evening's agenda is the adoption of the town budget for 2015-2016. You have Schedule A, Schedule B, which is included in Schedule A, and Schedule C.
Make a motion that we adopt Schedule A, operating $44,847,800. Schedule B, capital, $300,000 in operating. Schedule C of the enterprise fund, $5,120,762.
I'll second the motion.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And there is one housekeeping matter. Mr. Chairman, you will recall that there was a slight amendment to the provisional budget to allow an additional $10,000 for what the council deemed to be tourism-promotion. There may be a desire to move that into a particular line.
So we want to take what is currently shown on our budget. Tim, if I may. Thank you.
You'd like a new motion to make that definite?
Yes, please.
Also move that that $10,000 agreed upon last week is authorized.
So for clarity's sake, that's the tourism-promotion budget showing currently at $20,000. We want to increase that.
No, no, you already did that.
Go ahead.
Okay. But you're going to move it to a particular use?
For Explore Bristol. That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, so there should be a motion to reappropriate that line called tourism-promotion into the line called Explore Bristol.
And that motion will only apply to the full $30,000.
Full $30,000, yes.
Well, I would move in that direction that we reallocate that $30,000 from the subject place into a grant to Explore Bristol.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I think now that it's a motion that's carried legitimately through this meeting, that my colleagues and I, when this was discussed during a workshop forum, that it was discussed on monthly reports and all the financials coming in front of the council so we keep an eye on it, and of course, the appropriations that we discussed coming from the council part of the $30,000 and how it's supposed to be allocated.
And I agree with Councilman Stewart and I also.
I would be very grilled to add that all into the motion.
Thank you.
And we also want to make clear that the $30,000 is not going to go to the debt of the $20,000.
If I may, just for clarity's sake, I believe what we discussed was quarterly reports, if everybody's amenable to that. We actually did say quarterly, and we did say that it would not be used towards debt, and all parties involved were amenable to that. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, Lou.
Okay, the next item is the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
Was there, Councilman Stewart, you mentioned that you wanted to pull one of the items out?
Yes, I'd like to pull AA-7 and AA-8 regarding the recreation board minutes.
AA-7 and AA-8?
Yes.
Is that something that you wanted to discuss now?
Real quickly, I think it's some good highlights. Most of the time, our consent agenda gets buried towards the latter half of the meeting, and this is some good topics that I just want to share and highlight once we approve this information and convey it to the audience and the public.
Lou, do you need a motion to move that forward?
Well...
Right now?
If it's going to be part of the motion to approve, to consider that now, then you can consider it as one motion.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to do that? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
So Walter, our director in the recreation board, everyone involved knows that they do great things down at Town Beach and Quinta Gambling Community Center, and also other projects along with community development, who just sat down our director of community development, Diane Williamson, which is good news because we had talked about the Tanyard Brook Park, and it should be completed by July 4th. And if people aren't familiar with that, it's at the intersection of Wood and Hope Street. So it's going to be beautified, and it's going to have a great entrance coming in around that bend into Bristol. So that's good news that that's on its way to be completed, especially by the summertime because we were very excited that we could implement that also. Also, our Mont Hope School football field's design is ongoing, and we worked hard at some grants and some monetary value to those fields, so that's good. And the list goes on and on. We talk about it time and time again at our meeting about Walter and Diane, about the grants that they write for these programs, and we're always in the positive, and they do such a great job. And last but not least, something Walter has, and my colleague, Councilor Tim Sweeney, has brought to attention in the past couple years, along with my colleagues that were working with administration very diligently on many more programs, but one in particular to cut down 50 percent of the use of electricity is his LED program at Quinta Gamblin'. So I just noticed that. I just want to convey that to the public, that all those things are good.
Thank you, ma'am.
The only thing I want to bring up is I noticed there's a revision in the minutes of all your landscape of the parks and what's going on with the revisions. I was wondering if you could just kind of comment or let us know what those revisions are going to be, if it's going to be a townwide bid, or is it going to be separated as a bid for the new landscaping bid going out for the town of Bristol?
Yes, there is a bid going out. It'll be going out for the council's review the next month.
Okay.
Every three years, we put out the landscape contract for bid. It's a very big job. It entails all the townland landscaping and fertilization and field maintenance. And it is, you know, any company can bid on it.
Absolutely.
And this line, this time, we're putting in some opportunities of lesser work because this job is so big so that other landscapers in town can have a chance to bid on it.
So it'll be separated? It won't be one townwide?
Well, it's a one, it's a one, it's a full contract for the whole town. However, we can break out certain portions of that if somebody doesn't want to bid on the whole contract. They may not have enough equipment, or they may not have the resources to do the whole contract, but they may be able to do the rights of ways or the sewer easements. So we've kind of broken that out. And then, once the bids are in, we'll assess whether it's all going to go to one contractor or whether some of it will go to one contractor, and these breakout jobs will go to somebody else.
And as I just stated with the parks and the fields and whatnot, that's why I'm bringing it up. I just want consistency going forward now that, you know, there's a separation going forward. We want to keep up that type of standard with that consistency throughout the town. That's all why I led up into the fields and the parks, because we have such things to be proud of when we talk about those items.
Thank you. I absolutely agree. We have had the pleasure and the fortune of contract, of having DePont Landscaping win every bid.
They do a great job.
They do an excellent job. The resources that they put to bear in their hometown cannot be compared in any other community. I'm the president of the Rhode Island Parks and Recreation Association, and when other association members see it, they look at me and they say, "How can you get this done for that little amount of money?" So we're fortunate with DePont, and I've worked with them since I've been here, and nobody does it better, you know?
That's good.
So there's a lot of trust in their work.
And then, last but not least, AA-8, I know it's been mentioned, and the buzz has been around the town, but I just want to just reiterate publicly that Walter and his recreation department won third place worldwide, not just nationally, for the rain gardens at the Town Beach. So again, we know... Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I can...
That was the Walter Show. And well deserved, sir. Well deserved. Do you need a motion to receive and file those two agenda items? Lou, we're just all set.
Well, yeah. Basically, because you considered it all together, now you can just vote because it was to approve the consent agenda, considering those items at this time, so there's no need to deal with them separately or just dealing with the whole consent agenda.
So we already did that, so...
So now you just have to vote.
We didn't. Okay, so can I have a motion?
Well, they had a motion ready.
It was...
All in favor?
Aye.
Just have to vote.
Any opposed? Moving forward. Thank you very much.
That's all right. Now, I had it. I had it. Okay, the next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item C1, I'm sorry, the minutes of previous meetings, items A1 through 6.
I move that we accept the submission of minutes A1 through A6.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Now, we have item C1. This is the second reading for adoption of ordinance 2015-03, and this is for the recreation summer camp fee adjustment.
This is always worth bringing up again that it's still the Walter Show, apparently. What this reading is the second reading to increase from 125 to 150, which is the summer camp fee, which at 150 or 250, and I don't want it to be 250, but even at that dollar figure, it's an impressive offering. So we say thank you. So is there a motion?
So with that, this constitutes the second reading for adoption ordinance 2015-3, Chapter 11, and I move that we approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Item C2, this is the second reading for adoption of ordinance 2015-04, and this deals with the Prudence Ferry Dock parking fines and enforcement.
My only question on this, is this consistent or inconsistent with other practices in town? Is this amount of fine unusual or commonplace?
I, I'm just reading some of the other fines in that same section. Halsey, parking in violation of traffic control device, $25. Failure to remove vehicle during emergency, $25. Parking unattached, they're either 20 or 25 dollars, so I think they're pretty consistent.
Those are appropriate.
Well, I just have a suggestion. Since there is that schedule, and they don't very much, why don't we make them all $25 instead of having the police have to figure out which one they're applying?
You know, we could do that, but that would have to be a new ordinance change because we don't have that advertised for tonight. But I'll make a note to consider.
Isn't it a pretty good idea that for the, what do you say, chief?
I agree with you.
Because why should your patrolmen have to look up each one every time?
Well, it is in the computer, but if we can make it uniformed, I agree. Keep it consistent.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I would suggest, since I don't think this is urgent this particular night, that we ask the solicitor to reframe it with $25 on each of these.
I would say that the season is beginning, and this is a practice already that we're reinforcing with this ordinance, so I wouldn't suggest holding off on this one because, you know, there's already a practice in place.
Well, what if we pass it this way, and then in two meetings, we pass something else?
The new one's going to have to be read completely anyway, so I would say pass this one, and then if you're going to make the adjustments, because I have a sneaking suspicion that there might be a little bit more opposition to that, what you're suggesting.
There might be what?
There might be a little more opposition to what you're suggesting, okay, for the second go-round.
You're going to oppose my suggestion?
No, 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 no. I'm not saying back down, because I'm the one that processes the ticket payments, so I would be pleased to have them increased, okay? But I would say take care of this one because right now, the season has begun, and there was a need to get this in place now.
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I would move that, it's already been moved that this be the second reading, but after that vote, I'd like to propose something else.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I just wanted to discuss one thing, though, real quickly, is not only for the violators but for us as a town of Bristol, just for informational purposes, when we institute these things, especially in that area downtown through the Habermaster, that we have proper signage to convey that. That way, there's no surprises, like our town clerk said, of people come to the town hall. This way, the signage is there, they can't, you know, say anything about it, and we don't have a headache after, so...
I agree with you, Councilman Stewart. As we always do, we educate and we'll enforce, but that was made very clear from day one.
Okay.
There'd be visible signage for everyone, and we're going to educate the public as we move on.
Very good.
So, Mr. Chairman, I would like to propose that the solicitor prepare a new resolution ordinance for the consideration of the council, we may decide when it comes forward whether to adopt it or not, which modifies this present vote tonight to a value of $25 for each of these six or seven items that are on this resolution.
So Halsey, I'm going to ask you to hold that motion just for a second because we kind of had a mid-vote on that. So we're going to come back around and say, we had a motion and a second to approve this ordinance 2015-4. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so I heard that full motion, I think Lou did also, to bring this, to refer to the solicitor to...
I have it all, and I would make one further suggestion, that some of those fees are higher than 25, so did you wish to lower the ones that are higher than 25?
Well, there's only one that's...
Right.
That's higher, and the others are lower. Well, no, let's see, right now, there's just one, it's 35, which could be, yeah. No, I think that the take from this change would be about the same.
There are, or this doesn't show you everything, there are 11 other violations, excuse me, for $10, and there's one for 35, there's one or two for 15, so they're kind of all over the map.
So there are several listed in this?
Yeah. We just listed the new add-ons, and some of them...
Could I make this suggestion?
Go ahead.
That the police chief and the solicitor get together on this and...
That's fine.
...consider bringing to the council further modifications for our consideration.
That sounds like a good idea.
I think that the point might be that, when you look at just what's here, they all relate to, well, not all, but most of them relate to like trailers and boating and, you know, dock areas, and so now if you start getting into like downtown meters and all that other stuff, I think that's going to be a lot more confusing, or may not be. So over here, it was like just people, like $5 less was people like relating to trailers. But on the others, we'd have to really, I think, look at it closely and decide what's fair. I mean, I can't help, I don't know everything that's in this ordinance without looking at it, but can't help but thinking today, just as I was hearing the news, and the amount of parking violation increases that the mayor of Providence is proposing, and upping parking for special events, that that just creates, my thought was, what an unfriendly place, that's really not putting out the welcome mat, and I think we want to balance that. So I don't have a problem looking at it, but I would just like to ask that you keep all that in mind as well.
Absolutely. We'll take a look at neighboring communities that are similar to us, and we'll make a conclusion myself to solicitor and forward it to the council for some recommendation.
So we have a motion to refer this to the solicitor and the chief of police for further information. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, is item ordinance, excuse me, second reading for adoption of ordinance 2015-05 as amended. This is the ordinance that would reallow sidewalk alcohol service licensing.
So to remind everybody, this, if you remember, we had this ordinance in place last year, but it had a sunset clause, so it expired at the end of last year. That's why it's in front of us again, and this one does not have a sunset clause. So moving forward, it's the council prerogative to say yes or no to this, but this will be available to any and all that hit the parameters that are available. So there's a, is there a motion to approve or deny this?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk alcohol service license as amended. This is the second reading.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, this is the first reading continued from your April 8th reading of ordinance 2015-06. This has to do with a modification to the so-called tax stabilization incentive ordinance. You have correspondence from the director of community development regarding saying...
Diane, do you want to speak to this? I know you do.
So at the last meeting, the council asked that we do some more research, do a bit more homework, and come back to you with some revisions to the ordinance. So I provided for you a chart which summarizes the other towns that we compared, which you have in your packets. I also provided for you, at your request, a copy of the current tax stabilization agreements that are in place. And when I went through the comparison from the other towns, and then looked back at our ordinance to try to make it more simpler, it became apparent that I have to do a lot more cleanup to make it simpler. And so my suggestion was to continue this to the next meeting so that I can come in with probably what will be a new ordinance that will be a lot, hopefully, less complicated and easier to administer. So, and if you have any ideas, this chart, I think, is, it was pretty eye-opening to me, how different those other communities are, so I'm interested if you have any specific thoughts, but my goal is to keep the process the same with the council being the board that decides with some thresholds, with some parameters, but a little bit more easier to...
Well, I think that's a very positive suggestion. We thank you for willing us to go through it again. I know the second time's never as much fun as the first time, but I'm sure you'll make it better. So with that, I would move that this matter be continued to the meeting in May.
May 20th. I'll second that motion.
If you want to do it. Since it's going to be a whole new ordinance...
Right.
Continuing this one is really not going to work, so should we just table this, or didn't...
Well, my suggestion was going to be, like you said...
I think we should.
Just receive and file.
Okay. Well, I'll modify my motion to receive and file this particular document with the understanding that the subject will be brought forward later.
No, we second.
I was just going to ask my colleagues and you, Diane, if there's no rush on this, or is there a rush on this? Because once we give feedback and once you do your revisions, is it likely to give Michael the revisions so he can do a first reading the next meeting? Or would you like to come in front of us, discuss it, and then refer it back to Michael for the following meeting to do a first reading on what we talk about?
Well, I guess that's up to you. It might make sense to give you a draft for your feedback and then refer it to Michael with any edits.
What I was going to say is, the motion that you're making tonight is just to receive and file. The new one can come whenever. So if we get a draft by three weeks from now, it doesn't necessarily have to be for first reading, it could be the feedback, and then after that, we can go through the process of first and second reading.
Could I just ask a quick question? Diane, and I know you will address it in the new one, but I was surprised that the number, I mean, a little more than half of what you gave us were administrative only.
It was two.
And were, they just straight, like who, did you look far enough into that to see who made that determination? Was it like the planner? Was it the administrator, the mayor, or a department?
I did, and I can put that on the chart for the next time.
I'm just curious, because I'm just surprised to see that, that's all.
East Providence, it was with the planning department. One of the communities was with the tax assessor's office. In fact, it was very straightforward. It was just you fill out paperwork and you get your payment. It was really not discretionary at all, just you get it.
Well, it's sort of an interesting thing, because, I mean, if you're really using this as an economic development tool...
Agreed.
Then you would want to do that so that people would know that they have it, and it's not going to be up in the air as to whether or not they think your project is worthwhile. So, I mean, I think there's some value to thinking about that.
Right.
But I noticed that they put parameters on it. If it's like certain dollar value, excuse me, then it's this way, but if it's a higher value, it might be a little bit different.
Right, right. And the other interesting thing I noticed was that some communities do just the new building, some do the land and the building, and some do the land, the building, and the equipment. So it was sort of a tiered, and, yeah, I was actually surprised about the administrative process myself. And I think in East Providence, for example, they do administrative if it's less than $5 million. If it's over $5 million, it goes to the council, so that's a good...
I mean, I was surprised to see it, but when you think about it, it sort of makes sense to some degree.
Right.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is the first item in your licensing section. You have the application of St. Elizabeth's Church Holy Trinity Committee asking council consideration for a one-day dancing and entertainment license for May 29th, 30th, and 31st, 2015. You have recommendations from the town administrator and chief of police to approve with conditions, and also a recommendation from the fire chief and the town administrator.
I move that we approve with, you know, with all the conditions that have been set forth by the administration.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And you have the petition of Fancy Nail Care Services, 458 Hope Street, request council consideration for a holiday sales license. You have recommendations from the town administrator, chief of police, and fire chief all to approve.
Upon those recommendations and all the laws and ordinances abided, I make a motion we grant the petitioner his request for holiday sales license.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
In D3, you have the petition of Zachary Rivers of the Judge Roy Bean Saloon, 1 State Street, requesting council consideration for a sidewalk use license. You have recommendations provided by the town administrator and chief of police to approve with certain conditions, recommendation of the fire chief to approve, and also a recommendation of the code compliance coordinator to approve with conditions, and some related information provided in E1C below.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk use license for Judge Roy Bean based on the recommendations of the town administrator, the fire chief, and the code compliance officer, all with recommendations to approve.
My only...
Is there a second? Before you go there, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
But I'm just a little concerned. We don't want to pass this on the basis of their own diagram, we want to pass it on the basis of our new ordinance.
Correct, and when it comes to some of the others that have come in, what I'm going to recommend, especially when it has to do with specifically the alcohol service license, because that can be sometimes an enforcement problem, I'm going to recommend that if you are going to approve those, that it be based upon the receipt of a suitable diagram that would be approved by the code compliance coordinator, showing the dimensions and the location of all the facilities on the sidewalk.
It's a great...
I think that's a very good idea, because this diagram here is a picture of it, but no dimensions, so we don't want to...
And some are less...
We don't want to think we're passing that.
Some are less than that, so I think we have to have something that's enforceable.
But I think the, so, I mean, in this particular case, on the, I think it was the police department's recommendation, he did a good job on that, where he was talking about, he does a good job on all of them, but in this particular one, in terms of limiting the amount of space so that it's not bumping up against the corner and the neighboring business, and I think that, I'm assuming that's what we would be going with, that's the recommendation, and so, I mean, I think that's good. So all of that is implied that all these recommendations that you're making would be the way we do it. So it may be somewhat less. So they've got like only six or seven, six or eight feet on one side and then on the other, it's not the whole length.
We had extensive discussions over and over again about this petition and the sidewalk use and the businesses which we support, and we do support them, but like Council Harrisoff said, and I commend him for his dimensional changes to our ordinance last meeting, and also council... also Councilwoman Pirella, what she points up, is... And what I was concerned about when we revisited this time and time again, is not to impede the businesses, but, you know, there's a landscape of trees and mulch and lights, and what we don't want is people with strollers or a lot of pedestrian traffic during the busy months, or the wheelchairs, to not have a place to go. So, with the size of the tables and with the police department and our code compliance officer, I don't blame the businesses to do the maximum request to put the tables outside, but let it be known part of the motion that upon the approval to our petition and the police department code compliant officer, that it dictates how many tables they're going to have in front of this establishment, according to the passage of such dimensions that we need for our pedestrians, because that comes first, although we do support their initiative on this endeavor, so.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
Also from Mr. Rivers, request council consideration for sidewalk alcohol service license. You have the basically the same recommendations as in item three above.
Chief, do you see any problem in the proliferation of these things? Is it difficult to check on and keep these in line with what we intend?
I've communicated to the staff and the officer that goes down and actually goes through the diagram, that he has advised the owner or the manager that we will periodically check. We've taken some photographs to make sure that the table that was stated would be there is there, and it doesn't extend from a 32-inch table to a 36-inch table. Most of the officers do have a measuring tape in the vehicle, so it's not going to be very hard to measure the table. And we'll do it very diplomatically. It'll be when no one's eating, we're not going to interfere with the business, but we'll make sure that they're in compliance.
You're not going to jack the table?
Sorry, I'm going to move this table. Going to move you inside, right?
So, they're being forewarned, and I have the utmost confidence that these business people that we're dealing with are very cooperative, and the right thing will happen for the right reason.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk alcohol service license, based on the recommendations from town administrator, chief of police, code compliance officer.
I'll second that, and as the chief said, that we have faith in these businesses. This is a privilege when we hand these out, and I don't think that they'll curtail from going against what they have to do, because these come under review such as tonight, so I don't think we'll get to that point, because we have such great businesses. But again, with this particular case, there is one table that the police and code-compliant officer on one, I believe the east side, might be in question, so just take that under consideration due to the fact of the tree being right there. So, thank you.
And again, Mr. Chairman, if my suggestion could be also included as part of the motion, that it would be... The license would not be issued until we receive a diagram that is acceptable to the code compliance coordinator.
Can you amend your motion?
I'll amend my motion to include the diagram, and I'll second that amendment.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Wait, was there something else?
I have...
Chief, please.
I'd like to see all of the diagrams myself. Will we have them, the one that does the acts, like any building?
Could you come up to the mic?
Chief Martin?
Good evening.
One of the fine things about the code compliance officer is great, but I would certainly like to have approval on any of these diagrams, because I'm the one that has all the access to the buildings for egresses and allowance for the various staff to get in and out of, and how many people can fit in an area.
Well, I agree with that. Tim, will you amend your amended motion?
Third amendment. I amended to also include the chief of police... Uh, sorry, not chief of police, chief... Fire chief's recommendation to make sure that all the egresses and it's fire protected, correct?
So he can review those.
And I'll second that. I think it was me who disincluded you. It wasn't intentional, but it should be part of the minutes.
Part of the recommendation, yeah.
I'm not going to ask for any more discussion, so there's a motion and a... I'm kidding. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you. Thanks for the input, too, Chief.
Okay. The item D5, similar request for a sidewalk use license from Bar 3129 State Street.
Is there a motion?
Well, I would move that this be approved with an identical basis to the previous item that we've just discussed.
Second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
And from the same petitioner, request for sidewalk alcohol service license. That's item D6.
We have a guidance ordinance for that type of thing, don't we?
Correct.
So, any of these approvals should reference that, I should think.
They... Anyone who gets an approval for this license has to comply with all the requirements. That'll go through the clerk's office.
So, is there a motion?
I'll make a... Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the sidewalk alcohol service license for Bar 31.
Second.
There's a motion and a second?
And that's with all the conditions as previously specified for the other licensee.
With all the conditions previously specified.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Okay. The next is item D7. This is the petition of Roberto's, 450 Hope Street, requests council consideration for sidewalk alcohol service license. You have the recommendations provided.
We all knew this would generate a flood, and it has, but I would move that this one be approved on a similar basis of the last two that we've just approved.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any post? Thank you.
And item D8, the petition of Leo's Restaurante, requesting council consideration for sidewalk alcohol service license, and you have the recommendations provided.
Now, these last two are the ones that have been the initiators of the sidewalk dining.
Right. That's what I was going to say, they're the original.
Well, the sidewalk alcohol.
Alcohol, right. What the battle.
And so, I think that they've proven they're responsible to the extent they've been, and so I would move that this one be approved with the identical basis of the previous three.
Second.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any post?
Okay. This next one is the petition of Sherri DeChane, doing business as Wolf Wolf Pet Boutique and Biscuit Bar at 31 Bradford Street, requests council consideration for sidewalk use license. You have the recommendations provided by the town administrator, chief of police, and the code compliance coordinator to approve with certain conditions.
Well, now, I find this one a little puzzling. What are they going to do on the sidewalk?
I think they're going to put a bench.
They're just going to put a bench and sit there while the dog has its snack. Right? Right.
It's my understanding it was a table with two chairs. The sergeant spoke to the petitioner. I don't know if he's practicing architect or anything, but he convinced her that a bench would look better, and it's my understanding they agreed on a bench.
I'll move approval for the bench.
I'll second. The only thing I'm going to say is, and I have this discussion with a lot of the business owners, because when it's not dining with the tables and chairs, which abuts the first exterior wall of the establishment, and then, you know, a lot of people like to sit, and I understand during the summer months when they have pets, but just for the business to keep an eye that it stays out of the path again, once again, that it just doesn't keep moving, you know, where it can obstruct the pedestrians. And also, I wish you luck with this, but also, as long as she has the proof of insurance, I didn't see that, so just make sure she has that.
I was just going to say, I don't know if it's the same business or not, but when there was a similar business on State Street, they had a little tiny, like, bistro table and chair just on the grassy area, yeah? Just for people to sit down with, I guess, with their dog. Yeah.
Do you know, looking at this picture, it's a little alarming from the standpoint of what Counselor Stewart said earlier. You've got these gardens against the building and tree in the outer part of the sidewalk. I'd like to suggest that we hold off on this one to have those dimensions reviewed a little more carefully. The sergeant is, in his recommendation of the chief, has given some consideration to that problem, but, you know, it seems to me, for one thing, that if they're going to just put some wares out there and it isn't dining, it would be appropriate for them to place them not anywhere near the trees that block the sidewalk, but to put them longitudinally away from the trees. Because between the tree and its soil replacing the outer half of the sidewalk, and the rather narrow inside of the sidewalk with the bushes against the building, this is different than our usual sidewalk dining consideration.
I would just make an amendment that we just make sure that it's, you know, with the code compliance officer and the chief, that it's just make sure that it's not blocking any exits or entrances, and it's away from any of the trees. I mean, I think we could... If people are agreeable to that.
I agree with Mary there. I mean, it's, what is it, a three-foot bench? That's where people are going to come up and just sit with their animals. I don't think it... It doesn't look like it's going to block. From the original diagram, the two chairs and the tables are removed, so I think it's a... We could try it.
If I may, I'm going to...
Before you go any further, let me just add something here real quick.
The code compliance officer, Ray Falco, added something in our memo, and I know you all have it, but you can't see it out there. "I have reviewed this petition of the town council in regards to a new business at 31 Bradford Street. I measured said sidewalk and found it to be in compliance with Town Code Section 2510. Use of the sidewalk for dining and other purposes by business establishment." There is enough room for her to put a table and chairs in front of the business, and obviously, we've actually lessened it at this point in time. So, I think this might address the concern that Counselor Harrischow mentioned, but certainly you speak to that, Halsey. I think that it's been looked at.
Well, I think that, myself looking at this, I don't know the width of that inner half of the sidewalk in this particular picture, last picture. But if that's only about three feet, I don't think I'm quite for this myself. I don't think I'd vote for it just now, but I would go along with what the majority wishes to do.
What if it was contingent, though, on the report of the police and code-compliance officer to address your issues, and if that is not met, then maybe we can revisit it, as Counselor Pirella said, just to expedite the motion.
Well, to answer your question, Mr. Chairman, I just think that, obviously, if this goes bad, we're going to revisit it and cancel it or whatever we have to do.
As we should, too.
And so, I don't think I'm going to vote for it just now, but on the other end, if the majority wishes to do it, anybody that starts something like this is kind of untrial.
Fair enough. Is there any other discussion? So, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll oppose.
One opposed. Thank you.
From the same petitioner, request for holiday sales license with recommendation from the town administrator and chief of police to approve.
Motion to approve with all the recommendations and laws to be abided by.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item D11, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. You have a petition of Olivia Germano for St. Elizabeth's Church Holy Ghost Committee, requesting one-day dancing and entertainment license for May 22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the one-day dancing and entertainment license for May 22nd, 23rd, and 24th.
Isn't that three days?
It's May 22nd, May 23rd, and May 24th. Yep.
So, it's three one-day licenses?
Yep. Three one-day licenses.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll second that, and as Councilwoman Pirella always states every year, the season is upon us. So, if you like good Portuguese food, we just heard from the Holy Trinity, and we're hearing from the Holy Ghost, so it's three weeks of good food and good times, so try to support the local community and mingle with your friends, so.
I'm ripping off the front page with all the dates and times. That's right.
So, there's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. Item E1, this is the sidewalk use license renewals for 2015-16, and you have the recommendations provided by the town administrator, chief of police, fire chief, and the code compliance coordinator.
Make a motion to renew all the sidewalk licenses 2015, 2016, upon all the ones that did fill out their applications, Lou, and also, if I can make part of the motion that they provide you every year their proof of insurance, just for liability's sake, that they have that when they... I know you ask for it, but I just want to put it part of the motion, just to secure our liability issues, you know?
Belt and suspenders.
All right, thank you.
I've heard that before.
Oh, yeah.
So, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And a dog kennel license renewal request from Matthew Dame, doing business as a Dog's Life, 36 Springs Street. You have recommendation provided by the town administrator and code compliance coordinator to approve.
Perfect.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the dog kennel license, Matthew Dame, a Dog's Life, 36 Springs Street, based on the recommendations of their town administrator and code compliance officer to approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. Item F1, you have the petition of Richard Rogiro, 21 Kingswood Road, requests council consideration for two flashing school zone lights at Gateris School, and to relocate the existing High Street school zone sign. You have late item recommendation from the chief of police requesting continuous for further study.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Last year at this time, I was before you, requesting these flashing lights, and you respectfully denied me, excuse me, but were able to put the school zone speed limit signs on there. I'm back in front of you again this year, only because to tell you that, sorry to say, the school zone signs do not work. I spend many days there to pick up my grandson, I bring and pick up. The school zone signs do not work. People are going well beyond the 20 mile an hour speed limit, so all that I'm requesting from the council is that Gateris be given the same type of flashing lights that the high school has, that Rockwell has, and we all know that the Colt Andrew School is blocked off, so that no traffic can go up Bradford Street. So, I'm just requesting the same for the Gateris School and the children there. I think the flashing lights are much more effective. I think when people see those lights, they slow down. I think the school zone signs are nice, but they're like a speed limit sign, and you know how many times people exceed the speed limit.
Richard, the chief of police actually asked us, this is a late item for us, but he asked for 45 days to review this again.
And the reason I...
And then to speak to you and review it and see, is there a need? Has something changed? Is it...
Right.
Has it gone downhill?
And the reason I come this time of the year is because school is almost ending. It's too late to do anything now, and I'm hoping that through the summer, you know, I'll be willing to meet with anyone. I'm not a traffic expert, but I have an idea where the light should go. And the only other request that I would make, and that's the chief, the school zone sign that is on High Street right after you turn from Bayview is really ineffective, and I think, from my observation, it would be better served if it were right close to the do-not-enter sign where the buses park. That way, that when you stop at that intersection of High and Washington, that sign, as well as the do-not-enter sign, is looking you straight in the face. sign, as well as the do not enter sign, is looking you straight in the face. And hopefully, people understand it's a, it's a school zone. And the thing that frightens me about Gateris more than any of the other schools is the, even though there's a chain-link fence that separates the playground from the road, that playground is the closest to a traffic, to traffic than Rockwell or Mount Hope. So, I just worry about that. I mean, I worry about, I worry about my grandson, but I worry about all the kids, and that's why I'm hoping that I will get your support this year, because if not, I'm gonna come back next year again, so.
Richard, I don't know, I don't, and this is really a question for the chief. I don't remember this one coming before us. I thought yours was straightened out, but, so, there's another, it's not listed as a late item, but there's another letter here that says the State Traffic Commission is going, on May 13th, will be reviewing requests to install a 20 mile per hour school zone with flashing signs.
I can actually speak-
Located at 570 to 574 Hope Street.
I can speak to that one, Mary.
Okay, let me just finish reading it, if you don't mind. The school zone will be in effect on school days, blah, blah, blah. So, that's obviously Colt Andrews. I don't remember seeing that here, so it went to the Traffic Commission. I don't know if they ever will amend stuff there, but I mean, this other one, if they're gonna do it, should, they could do both of them, I would think.
I asked for that, actually, and that's, that was to bring my colleagues up to speed on that, and kind of a connected note on this. Parents came to me in regards to Colt, sorry, Hope Street, in front of Colt Andrews School, and I know they've spoken to all of us in regards to the cars going by and, and worked with the chief, and the chief has bring it up to the Traffic Commission to ask for their opinion on putting lights in downtown. So, to Mary's point, I don't think we can add it, but certainly, it's certainly something that we could convey.
I guess my point is, it doesn't have to come through us first, because I don't remember hearing, seeing this one before. So, I mean, you may be able to get this added in either the way this Colt Andrews got done, or via a legislator to put this on as well. This is another option. Since, since I've sort of like looking at this and going, okay, I don't think that address is not for Gateris.
Well, but I guess I'm not following this. If Hope Street's a state street, though.
To back up, actually, they're two-
It's the State Traffic Commission.
They're two connected because of blinking lights. After that, they're not connected. So, it's, Hope Street is definitely a state road. Hope Street requires a DOT to give us an okay, and I'm sure the chief wants to speak to this, and so.
Right. You are heading in the right direction there. The Hope Street petition has been forwarded to DOT because, as we all know, Hope Street is a state road. We had talked about, Mr. Rogiro, when you were last here, Washington and High Street were our concerns, because that's the area that Gateris School is located on. Am I correct? We addressed both of those, and it continuously, you believe, is a situation that should be addressed. I would be more than glad to have an officer meet with you again, if it takes you sitting in his squad car and pointing out these vehicles, because that is a road that's not traveled by, you know, someone coming through town to go to Portsmouth or anywhere else. Those are local residents, so I'm pretty sure if there's one or two of them, or even a half a dozen, we'd be more than glad to introduce ourselves and let them know they're traveling over the speed. I will let you know, and I think you're there every day, there is a police car assigned there at the beginning of the school day and at the end of the school day. That officer is 99% of the time out of his vehicle, because I ride by, unless it's inclement weather and there's a reason for him to be in the car, okay, whether it be on his radio or his computer, he's standing outside there. So, he has not brought it to my attention that, you know, we've stopped vehicles for going around the corner, but I'm not disagreeing that we can do more. So, let's take a closer look at it. In the next 30 days, 45 days, I will reach out to you probably sometime at the beginning of the week, and we'll have an officer look at it, and let's get a report back to the council, and hopefully, we can come up with some remedy.
So, Richard, I understand what your problem is with the playground, because I turn down Washington Street every, every morning, or many mornings. But you're not looking for something on Hope Street as well. Is that correct?
Well, I gotta, and I'm not here to argue, but I respectfully are going to disagree with the chief on several issues. You're right, the police officer is there every morning, but the problem that I see, from just sitting there, you know, in the morning and in the afternoon, is that the police officer is standing right about where the janitor is standing. If you're someone coming from Hope and Washington, you're not gonna know that police officer is there until you're right at the school. I mean, he's not there with a radar gun checking people, and I can tell you honestly, when people turn that corner, I think most people figure, well, the cop is there, but I'm gone by now, and they increase their speed. I want people that are here, that have schoolchildren there, get in your car and drive 20 miles per hour, and see how difficult it is unless you're really paying attention to go 20 miles per hour. And I'm assuming that that speed is, allows someone to brake quickly than someone going 30 or 35 miles an hour. And I will tell you, and I think Halsey will attest to this, I will come back as often as I have to until I get those lights. I think one light should be at the beginning, when someone turns from Hope to Washington, and I think one light should be just slightly middle of the chain-link fence on the opposite side, so that when someone turns from High Street to go towards Hope Street, they see that light. To me, there's nothing more important than the safety of children. And I don't disagree. Putting a police officer there, I think is great for the kids, for the crossing and everything. But during the day, when there's recess going on, there's, and I'm not saying that there should be, there's no police officers there. I want people to go 20 miles per hour, and if they go 25 or 30 or 35 in that zone, it's too much. Will the flashing lights stop everyone? Probably not. But I think it will be more effective than the stop sign, the stop, the school zone signs that we see now. And again, I say to the council, you can't sit there and tell me that Gateris is less important than Rockwell, Colt Andrews, or the Mount Hope High School. And they have the protection that I think they need with the flashing lights.
Got you.
Richard, I-
Wait, wait, just one second. I wanted the chief to respond.
Yeah. And I agree with Mr. Rogiro, what he's saying, but we went from when we're dropping off children and picking them up to halfway during the middle of the day when they're at recess, which I believe is just as important. There's no doubt about it. The other thing is, as you said, these people are driving down this road, okay, turning from, whether it's High Street, I mean, from Hope Street or High Street. Unless they're not stopping for the stop sign at High Street, by the time they get by that school, I mean, if they're going beyond 25 miles an hour, they're really putting their pedal to the metal. Because I've driven in this, on these streets for the last 30 years, and I've taken that corner sometimes with lights and siren to go to an emergency call. I can't say I was beyond that school at 30 miles an hour.
Well, I think the bigger problem is from Hope to, coming from Hope down Washington.
Yep.
And I will agree with you to some, some respect that turning from High Street, you know, it's hard to get up to speed. But if you hit that gas pedal hard enough, by the time you get to the driveway where people are going in, I think you can be beyond the 20 mile per hour speed limit.
And that's why I'm saying, I think what we need to do is study, because I agree with you. That school is not less, more or less important than any school. And as I say every day, each and every youth is important to us in this community, and we're gonna do everything as paramount, the safety to each and every youth, the school grounds and everything else. Let's take a little time. Let's study it. We definitely want to incorporate you in this, Mr. Rogiro, because you have the knowledge of when this may be happening. Looks like you've got some good time to help us out with it, so we're gonna solicit you on that.
You know, when you're retired, you have a lot of time to do things.
And I assure you-
Maybe I've got too much time on my hands. I don't know.
No, we'll, we'll let you ride in the front seat.
Chief, chief.
But, Richard, I do think you need something on Hope Street because, or right as they're making the turn, because I don't think High Street's as much the problem as Hope. And when a lot of people who are not from the community don't necessarily know what that building is, as it sits back, you know what I mean? So, they're coming up, if they don't, if there's like not a lot of traffic on Hope Street, they don't even have to stop that for, you know, come to a complete stop to make the left. That's where I think you're running into a problem. So, if there's some signage to let people know that they're coming upon the school on the Hope Street side, I think that would be important.
Well, my, my feeling is, if you can put one light on one side, just balance it and put another light on the other side.
Halsey, did you want to add something?
Well, I was just gonna say, Richard, we've always admired your tenacity, and I know we'll see you again on this. But, you know, that is a little different situation than the other schools, in that the other schools do not have a corner. I was driving north on High Street this afternoon, and I thought to myself, I don't want to go through there at all. I turned left on Oliver, so I didn't have to go through there. But, you know, other people have to go through there. But I think the geometry of it is a possible problem. For one thing, wouldn't it be better if the school bus stopped a little further from the corner?
No, the school buses are actually in between Gateris School and, and Gateris Field. They're not out on the streets.
They're off the road.
Well, I've seen them sometimes, kind of pretty close to the corner. I think they should do that. Well, that's, that's important, because if somebody goes around that corner, as the chief says, they've got to slow down if they obey the stop sign. But on the other hand, you have to get reoriented when you make a left turn, and if there's a child near the position after you made the turn, it's a little extra challenge to be sure you're driving safely. I mean, I would, I mean, that supports your request. Not that that's the only consideration, but I think it's very good you brought this idea forward.
The other thing is, I will go with anyone in a vehicle, and I will, will stop at Washington Street and accelerate from Washington Street through that little crosswalk and see what you can get by the time you get to the next driveway. I mean, I sit there every day from about 3:00 to 3:20, waiting to pick up my grandson. And I will tell you, I didn't say, I wasn't gonna say this, but I'm gonna say this. There are even town vehicles that are exceeding the speed limit coming from Hope to the intersection of Washington and High Street. And I don't think people do it intentionally. I just think you're driving, you don't, if, once you get past that signage, I just think it's like, it's like a speed limit sign. But I think the light, the flashing light is, I think it makes you more realize that you're in a school zone, you need to slow down.
Tim?
Yeah.
You know, we had a lot of criticism, Halsey, remember?
Tim wanted to share something. Go ahead, Tim.
We faced a lot of criticism when we blocked off Bradford Street.
That's true. We did. Now everybody realizes it's right.
We came under heavy criticism for blocking that off, but we did it because we felt it was in the best interest of the children that, that were at Colt Andrews. And all I'm saying to you is, my opinion, and I'll meet with anyone, I think it's in the best interest of the children at Gateris that we put the flashing lights there. I don't want to take any more of your time.
Richard, I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, I drive in front of Rockwell every day, and I go the 20 miles an hour. I know how hard it is, and you just, you're very cautious of the flashing lights. Chief, I just had a quick question. In the study, are you gonna look at various points of the day? Because Richard made a point that there's, you know-
Absolutely. That is, that is a concern. I think that's a very valid concern, because during recess time, I mean, it could be 50, 100 children out there. I don't have a count. And there is no, you know, stamped time when there is a police officer at that time. But I will tell you, at the start of the school day, there is a police officer assigned there, and at the end of the day, there's a police officer assigned, unless they have a call to go to.
No, they're, they're there every day. No, I-
Okay, and I believe they're standing outside their vehicle and very visible.
They are. In fact, most of the time in the morning, the officer stands with the custodian that escorts the people across the street. And in the afternoon, he's usually in the same spot.
And the only thing I will say, and I appreciate Mr. Rogiro stepping forward, but I will tell you that we've had no other person step forward and say, this is a concern that we have, whether it's a parent, a faculty member, the custodian, anyone else, you know. But I'm not saying that he doesn't have a valid point, and I agree. A visible light is a visible signal to the eye, no doubt about it. But we need to justify the reason for doing it.
Sure.
But we're gonna look into it. I can assure you-
Okay, so, so to wrap this up.
Yeah.
What I've heard is a concern. What I've heard is the chief expressed that he wants to look into it for you. He also wants to have your input directly and is looking for it. I would imagine also that, I don't think we've mentioned the school department. I'm sure that you're gonna be talking with the school and say, give us your thoughts on this. What do you see happening there? And then we expect, in 45 days approximately, some information to come back. And I can speak for the whole council and say that if the chief of police and you, and everybody talks about this and says it's appropriate, then it's appropriate, and then we take the next step.
And I thank you very much. I didn't mean to take so much of your time. The other person I think that you would be a good resource for you is the custodian, because he sees a lot that I think that I see, and we talk sometimes, and I'd be surprised if he didn't agree with what I'm saying.
Will you be there tomorrow morning?
I'm there every morning.
I will meet you there. What time are you gonna be there?
8 o'clock.
We're, we're close, like 8:55, 9 o'clock. We're right under the wire.
I will meet you there with, with the officer and the custodian.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, with such extensive conversation due to this topic and members of the school department, and I had a conversation with town administrator Tony Texera, and I spoke with the DOT, and I'm sure you have Tony, too, regarding something that got lapsed because of our devastating winter. And this was a topic that Mr. Rogiro brought up, was the Rockwell School Zone. Last year, we discussed the flashing light on how legally it was less than 75 feet of the 300-foot perimeter, and then we decided that the state was gonna put a sign on Hope Street in tandem with that flashing light, so it'll be in compliance. And they said that the winter did deter it from them putting it in because of all the snow on the side of the road, so that's in progress right now, and that will be done. But I'm sitting here, I know cost was an issue, and we were trying to relocate the pole on a state road, but I don't know, with my tenacity, if there's gonna be flashing lights all around, maybe, there might be one instead of the sign, so.
So, what I'm looking for, please, is a motion to refer this to the chief of police to give us a report back. I would say it's, we're almost in, so in June, is that a fair comment? Is that a fair timeline? Is there a motion to that effect?
Absolutely. And I would move to that effect.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council. Item F2 is the petition of Donna Jean Castro, 8 Baker Street, request council consideration for a no parking space in front of her residence. You have recommendations from the town administrator, chief of police, and fire chief provided.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Donna Castro, and I live at 8 Baker Street. Purchased the residence in 2007, and have had no problem up until about 10 months ago with parking issues on the street. Starting last September, well, actually, last June, when the mailman going by my mailbox wasn't stopping to deliver my mail. After that happened two or three times, I went down to the post office, and it was explained to me how the postman works, that he has to be able to pull up to my mailbox, deliver the mail, and pull straight ahead. I have very little frontage in front of my house. If a car is parked there, the mailman is not a considerate mailman. He doesn't go out of his way. He just doesn't deliver my mail. So, no problem. I just asked the gentleman to, who had just moved in, please don't park there, and the reason being the mail issue. It worked for a while. He parked there on and off, which was fine. And just to mention, at the same time, an SUV parked in front of my house not only stops my mail, it stops entrance to my front steps. I have no sidewalk. So, any emergency vehicle that needs to get into those front, into my front door is blocked. Then we had the Blizzard issues. Parked in front of my house and plowed in with the town plow beeping the horn to move the vehicle. I paid someone to come and clean that area. Still, the mailman can deliver my mail. I asked the person, when I saw him come out, who owned the car. He said he did. I said, would you mind moving in? I have someone coming to plow. He, he looked at me with his shovel and said, yeah, and went two houses down the cross, down the street to shovel out a Schwartz car. I said, excuse me, there's a no parking ban. He said, yeah, I know. Now, this is all going to a tenement house next door to me. The gentleman moved in last summer with five vehicles and a trailer. Four were unregistered, nor was the trailer registered. It's not, not my problem, but one kept being parked in front of my house, not allowing me to receive my mail, or now, during a parking ban. I called the police station to have it parked. The dispatcher literally hung up on me. He was too busy to talk to me. Whatever, it didn't get plowed. I talked to the plow driver. He said he had called it in. This gentleman had two vehicles parked during a snowbank on the street. Fine, got through that, explained to him I paid someone to come and plow, so I can get my mail. About a month ago, tenants moved into the second floor in the same building. They move in with three more vehicles. Again, I'm leaving notes. Please don't park here. My mailman won't deliver the mail. They're not happy. They're three, three young men. They're not happy. Two weeks ago, I had contracted- Two weeks ago, I had contracted someone to cut a tree down in front of my house. Not that I wanted to, but they're interfering, the roots were interfering with the sewer line. Lo and behold, there's a car parked in front of my house, have no idea whose car it is. Called, called the police, asked them to run the plate so maybe I could find the person so there wouldn't be any property damage to the vehicle. Well, it seems that they were related to the people on the second floor of this next door tenement. No one was around. Now, I have someone coming to cut this tree. I don't want to cause any property damage. Police came down and said, well, anybody that knows how to cut a tree should know, won't hit that car. I said, well, I own this property, I pay taxes, I have insurance. I would prefer not to have property damage. Well, the people weren't home and the officer looked at me and said, well, I can't tell them to move anyway. I said, well, okay. Well, we got down part of the tree and it was suggested to me that the logs be moved by the person helping me with the tree. Stay in front of my house for the night so that they, no one would park there so he could come back the next morning and finish it. In the meantime, the people came home. I asked them to move the tree, move the car, explained why. They were not happy. Comments, everything else, but they moved the car. But I had to wait till the next day to finish my tree, which I, again, I'm paying someone for. While the logs were left, I left them in front of my house. They were logs. This is, was a 16-foot curly willow tree with a base this big. There were logs. The next morning, I get up and the logs were placed in front of my driveway. I called the police. The same officer came, suggested maybe I might want to think about moving my mailbox to my house, which I looked at him and said, really? To accommodate tenants next door, I pay property taxes. Well, now looking at this report, you can see that that's not allowed to happen anyway, according to the postmaster. Then he suggested to me that if you had done property damage to that person's vehicle, they would be the complainant. I looked at him and said, I realize that. I worked in insurance for 30 years. I do not care to have a loss against my homeowner insurance. So this has been ongoing since last June. I've been nice. The problem with the unregistered vehicles, I get mad after the last blizzard when the guy had an attitude and didn't care about moving his vehicle. And I called the police department and I said, what's the story on unregistered vehicles? I don't know what the story was, but an officer did come down and pretty much of those cars have been cleaned up. But it's been, it's been a problem for me. I live alone and I just don't think I should be, again, in this report, it's being recommended that I move my mailbox to accommodate rental property.
Have you talked to the landlord?
I do not know who owns the house.
We could find out from the town hall because I, I really think, I mean, I, I feel your pain, I really do, because I have a similar problem where I live, but it's not as bad as this, thank God. And it's, and I have a lot more property around me, but it's very, very, very frustrating when you can't get anywhere near your house and you're coming back with groceries or whatever the case may be. And I think that when you hear about some of the issues, particularly, are they, are these students or are these just?
No, I don't think they are. The ones on the, the man on the first floor is not.
I would, I would definitely like contact the landlord and, and let them know that you've been trying to be, you know, they're just not complying with anything because I don't know how else, I don't know if there's any other solutions to this because it's public parking. And that's what I get as it, you know, that's what I'm told constantly when I complain about some situations.
Right. Well, my concern, Mary, is number one, my mail issue.
Yeah.
And not feeling that it's, it's my responsibility to move my mailbox with tenants, number one. And number two, a rescue or fire issue. My, I, I literally parked my SUV in front of my house up to the driveway as close as I could today. My stairs are totally blocked.
And I'm not sure why the, why those cars weren't towed during a snow, a snowban.
They were, I guess they had too many. But I did, I did call in March.
One way they learned their lesson, that if they have that many cars, they should be towed.
As you know, Mary, with the snowban, we tow at the request of the highway department. As we get down to the streets, believe me, we don't pick and choose. When we need to clean the street, they're towed. We start with the main arteries and go right through. Mrs. Castro, I've known you for years. Usually there's an issue with a dispatcher or a police officer, I have an open line of communication. You know where I'm at. I don't run and hide. You're welcome to come up and we can discuss any issue you have. As far as the mailbox situation, the officer did go down and speak to the postmaster, I believe.
Yes.
And his recommendation was that you, the postmaster and the mailman get together because that's really who can come up with a solution. You know, the police department's limited on what we can do. All he did was, when he said to you, if you move it five feet from your property, it would bring it to the corner of your driveway.
Right.
And then at that point, if any vehicle was parked in front of it.
It wouldn't be a problem.
We would tow it, tag it and then tow it. That's what we're trying to do as far as parking in front of your stairway. As Mary said, that's a frustrating thing. I will not deny that in any way. However, there's many homes in town that have that. So, I mean, that's where we're kind of juggling with using some common sense and trying to work well with your neighbors, as Mary said, with the landlord.
Okay. I, I've been to the post office and I have spoken about this mailman. He, he, it states in the report that he walks the route. He does not. He, he does do, go in the vehicle to each house.
Well, I can't say he goes to each house because I think that we've had a call down there last year, if you remember, where he was, I don't know if it was.
No.
This exact mailman, but he was attacked by a dog.
He wasn't attacked, but yes.
The dog was not in the vehicle, he was outside.
It was the same house I'm talking about. Tenants live there and they really don't care. And my feeling is, at my age, I live alone, what are my options? I, I ask for this as a last resort.
Right.
I'm leaving notes every time someone moves in there. And it was to a point for a month, there were eight vehicles and a trailer.
It's ridiculous.
For two apartments. And I, I don't, like I said, I don't know who, who owns the house. My feeling being, what's he going to do about it as long as he gets his rent?
Well, we would hope that he's a cooperative individual and I think we can probably work together and see if we can have a conversation with him.
Okay.
And as far as any unregistered vehicle, believe me, if it's parked in the roadway, it's going to be tagged properly and it'll be impounded. Okay? It doesn't belong on the street.
He's, he's pretty much resolved it since the officer came almost eight weeks ago. We've gotten rid of a few of the vehicles and a couple of things have been registered. So that's, that's helpful.
Okay.
Because it doesn't allow other people in that house to park anywhere else.
Well, that, that's what I was going to say. Off-street parking in any two-tenement, three-tenement house in our town, you know, there's driveways, but there's a certain amount per ordinance of parking space for off-street parking. But I know I've been getting phone calls the past month and Councilwoman Perrell brings up a good point. We don't want to single them out. But as of late, with these landlords, we're having a problem with college students and this is why we're asking you, because they're renting rooms, they're not renting apartments. So certain neighborhoods, we're getting complaints of just abundance of 10 cars to a house on off-street parking. And it's getting to be ludicrous. I had a conversation with the quote compliance officer and it's a hot topic to address because trying to identify it with the landlords, but it, it does exist in this town. So I'm glad she posed that question to you. But we understand your plight, but also are you willing, before we can act, on installing a sign right away? If you have the communication with the chief and the postmaster to see if some type of alleviation can take place before we do this measure?
Oh, yeah. Josh, if we, maybe with the owner of the house?
Yeah, I think you should.
Yeah, you should.
Because I think, one of the things, and this is not, this is a different issue, but I heard one time and I thought it was such a great idea and they were talking about like party houses in Providence or another, or Narragansett, another community, it wasn't Bristol. And it was on one of the radio shows and somebody called in and said, you know what? I got tired of even dealing with the landlord. I went right to the, the insurance company. I don't even know if this is legal or not, but he.
So we're not suggesting you try this at home?
But I thought it was a great idea because it was sort of like either tell them you're going to go to the insurance company or that you go to their insurance company. And he said, well, the problem got solved like the next day. You know what I mean? Because there's issues that are being raised with the partying and with other things that go on. I mean, you know, when you start having, especially in downtown here where there's, there are not a lot of driveways, and you start having apartments with 6, 8, 10 vehicles, there is no place to park. And it gets to be like a fight every time you want to come to your house.
That's basically what I've been up against. And it's just two apartments there.
Most of this, unfortunately, most of these issues are if we could work together better as neighbors and certainly it's, I'm not suggesting you're not trying because it sounds like you're trying very hard.
I did.
What I've heard is the chief is willing to be part of the solution, which is, what I always hear is that you're part of the solution. The next step would seem to be that maybe a conversation with the owner of the home right next to yours. And then also additionally, maybe with the postmaster again, maybe there's other options there, maybe a short-term solution. Maybe they can work with you a little bit and be a little bit more flexible with delivering the mail as we try to find a solution together. And maybe we can have this, we can continue this on our next agenda and see if there's a positive outcome from that. And if there isn't, then we can take the next appropriate step.
So.
Is that, is that okay with you? Is that okay with you, Ms. Castro?
Works for me, thanks. Pencil me in, sir.
So could I have a motion to continue this to the next meeting?
Thank you.
So moved.
Second. There a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all.
The next item on the agenda, item F3, is the petition of Matthew Shaw, 16 Justin Street, request for a traffic light signal at Jameson Drive. You have a late item recommendation provided by the chief of police to refer to the State Traffic Commission.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, Chairman, members of the council. My name is Matthew Shaw, 16 Justin Street, here in Bristol. Before you is a request to petition the State Traffic Commission for the placement of a traffic signal at the intersection of Jameson Drive and Route 136. I will let you know that this same request was made to our state senator on, on March 16. And he voiced his agreement with the request and suggested that I petition this council. I have his response here for the record if.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Not only would I seek a request for this town council to petition the State Traffic Commission, but I would also ask for its support. The petition is fairly straightforward. The traffic at this intersection is becoming substantially more difficult and hazardous to both pedestrian and vehicular traffic. I think it's, it's made more evident and it's more of an issue because of the placement of a rip the bus stop right there at 136 and, and Jameson. And that stop, I believe it serves 61X, serves commuter traffic to and from Providence. And there's only a few stops during the day, northbound into Providence and then southbound in the evening. Crossing that street to meet the bus is, is very difficult. It's very hazardous. The, as I'm sure you're aware, the, the buildup in the morning and in the evening is, is fairly substantial. Not only is this a pedestrian issue, but the, Jameson Drive serves as the only means of ingress and egress to that neighborhood back there. And there's no other way in or out. And without a traffic signal device, it's difficult to maneuver during the commute and really during most times of days. It's made more difficult by the fact that to the north, you've got emerging two lanes of traffic on southbound 136. And that causes a little bit more confusion. That's the town of Warren, um, before them. But for those reasons, and I, I know the town council has my petition, I ask that you refer this to the State Traffic Commission and that you would also support the placement of a traffic signal at that intersection.
How far is that intersection from the most adjacent stoplight?
I think the, the police chief might be able to answer that question. Butterworth doesn't have a traffic signal, but the next, sorry, the next, probably about quarter mile, maybe? Not even?
Be five pole lengths, which would be about 550 feet, maybe?
Approximately that. I'm very familiar with the area. I lived in that neighborhood for 17 years. And as this gentleman's saying, at one time, Satcham Road was a throughway to Medicum Avenue. When that became a cul-de-sac, then it was only one exit in and out. So I do understand what, what you're saying and where you're coming from because I lived there for 17 years. It has become difficult and challenging, but as I said to you in a late item, because I had received this late, that the first step is to take it to the State Traffic Commission, let them review it. I know there's going to be a question or concern because it is right at the Bristol-Warren line within feet. So obviously Warren, Warren's going to have to be involved in this equation. So I think moving it forward, I think that's the first step that we need to take is take it to the state commission, let them look at it, come back to us if they need some input, which usually they will, and let's see where it takes us.
I think.
I think it's premature to comment on it either way without some good data around our hands.
Well, I, I've served up there. It's very difficult to get out of very business driveways, so much so that you almost have to turn to the right and then go up somewhere and make another way to turn around.
That's generally the way you got out of here.
But the proof of that is that even though the light may be 500 feet away, it definitely gives you a clear opening to come out at some point when the red light is on.
I would, I would submit otherwise.
But that's only in one direction.
Exactly. Exactly. I would submit otherwise, particularly since that light is on the Bristol side, you've got merging traffic on the Warren side, two lanes of traffic coming at you from, from the north coming southbound on 136.
I'm particularly worried about it being like, in addition to trying to get in and out of your neighborhood, you know, the bus stop that you talked about, that, you know, stopping over there, especially if people are, you know, crossing the street.
My chief concern is the ability to cross the street to the rip the bus stop, number one. And number two, that serves as the only means of ingress and egress into that neighborhood.
Right.
There's no other, I'm not sure why Satcham was closed off, but there are no alternatives. Satcham would be closer to the traffic light down at Fatima, but that's no longer an option.
I just had a question for the chief. In Wally Fieg's, pardon me?
No.
Oh. I mean, you said to just send it to the State Traffic Commission and see what happens, but in Senator Fieg's letter, it said that, you know, it would have to go to both councils and if they agree, we should be, you know, sending a resolution of support to the State Traffic Commission. And also the police and fire chiefs can be helpful in providing supporting materials if they agree with the request. So do you think that we should be on record to, to support this or would someone go to, you know, like?
Not at this time. I would recommend you send it to them. The State DOT Commission will then solicit information from whoever they need to and take their recommendation before making a decision. You can ask them for something, but they're not necessarily going to do anything until they have what they need in front of them. And it's going to be their own study and their own data.
Chief, this could be part of the Medicum Carter Plan, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
So what's the pleasure of this council?
Would this be a continued item?
I think it's a continued item and let's continue it to the DOT Commission.
Well, Chief, I took it from your earlier remark that you would like a little time to reconsider this.
Yeah, I would like to look at some data myself. I'd like to pull out the accidents that we have in that area. I'd like to contact Warren, see exactly what they have, you know, as we said, we're I'd like to contact Warren, see exactly what they have, you know, as we said, we're talking about feet from within that intersection to the Warren line.
So if I may, I'm going to make a motion to refer this to the administrator and the police chief, and then once we get that ample information, they could place it back on our docket for informational purposes to go from there.
I'll second that motion.
Because I think it's not a good practice for us to throw an idea at the state for them to fail to reason, fail to accept our suggestion. If we have a lot of those, then we lose credibility. So I think your idea to look into it internally with the two towns first is the right idea.
So it's not going to be sent to the Traffic Commission right now?
We?
I think it should be sent to the Traffic Commission.
I would recommend we send it to them and then let them know that we're going to do our part, because they're ultimately going to make the decision either way. It's a state road, and they're going to do their own study and make a decision on what they want to do.
I think the motion should include not only to the administrator and the chief to look into it as well, so that they can be prepared for the information to forward if they find it, or upon request from the Traffic Commission, but also to forward this to the State Traffic Commission.
As you can see, you have it before you.
That was part of his minutes and what he was going to do. That's why I referred it to both of them with their statements.
Yep, absolutely. And as you can see, you just had one prior to this with the State DOT on Hope Street. They're letting you know, and they let the police department know, and I have an officer that'll go up with some data and submit testimony on forward or reverse, whether or not we agree or disagree to it.
Well, I do think that, I don't know if you know who the people are that ride the bus in addition to your neighbors, but when it is before the State Traffic Commission and we know what that date is, I do think that, and it may not be for like a month or two, it usually takes a while, right?
Yeah, it's going to be a couple of months.
Yeah. I mean, to have people go and write a letter or to, you know, go and testify, because it is open.
I'm not certain how the State Traffic Commission gives notice of its hearings proceeding, so my concern would be when it's on the agenda for the State Traffic Commission.
Could you speak into the mic? Thank you.
My concern would be when it would be on the agenda for the State Traffic Commission and how I would receive notice.
We can answer that one for you easily. Certainly, the chief will know that, and I think we can certainly make sure that you are aware.
That's fantastic.
Because you should be aware, and I'm sure that was your intention to begin with.
And by contacting Ripper, Ripper and find out exactly when the bus stops, pick up and drop off, and do a little survey ourselves as far as the count of people getting on that bus, crossing the street and everything else. Let's get some good facts before we move forward.
And then you'll have the opportunity, and so will your neighbors, to speak in favor or against, as the case may be. Is that okay?
Yeah, just, and will be the council today recommending this be placed to the Traffic Commission?
That's exactly what that motion is. Exactly.
Could I ask, Mr. Chairman, that you repeat his motion? I don't quite understand which way you went on that motion.
My motion is to refer this matter and all the documentation to the administrator and the police chief and to, for them to forward it to the State Traffic Commission to review this and report back to us with the information and place it on the docket when that is concluded.
So you want to refer it both to the administration and to the state superintendent?
And the police, and our police chief, yes.
Well, the only trouble with that, in my view, is that if we send it up to the state, the implication is the town is in favor of it. And I think a better process is for the town to decide what it's in favor of and then make an application in view of our decision, but.
So for clarity on that, on clarity on that one, I believe the intention is that referring it to the chief and the administrator is to then forward it off to the DOT so they can do their research. So I don't, I don't hear anyone saying in favor or against, but they can run concurrently as.
As long as we counsel communication to the state to make it clear that we're not decided ourselves.
I agree. We need more information, so. Sure, it sounds that way, so.
And since we're specifying clarity, if you leave your number, I will personally call you when.
So it's going to the State Traffic Commission or not?
Yes, the answer is yes.
It's going to go to the State Traffic Commission. That's my.
Ed will give you a call.
The reason why there's a little bit of, it's because it goes through the chief of police to get there. That's why there's some question, as it should. So, so we have a motion and a second, and is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
If you would like this, this is one that we just got notice of the State Traffic Commission meeting, just so you can see what it looks like and all the information.
This is your current email? Okay.
Yeah, I don't really need that. That was just presented to us tonight, so that's a notice of a meeting.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Shaw.
Thank you.
Luke. Next item is item H1. This is first item under the Old Business, continued from February 4th. This has to do with Councilman Stewart's request for an update on the Tanyard Brook project.
Yes, as we recall, Beta was in front of us, and they needed time to conclude their easement findings, and they said that it should be about three months, so it's placed before it is right now for an update. I know my colleagues and myself like to see this project ongoing and moving according to the timeline with Beta, so it's basically an update to the residents and also to see if we're according on that timeline with what they had said they were going to do.
I do have some information to share. We met, and what I'm saying, we, Beta, myself and Director Galuska, we met with nine out of the 10 folks who will be in pact for the realignment of the Tanyard Brook. Unfortunately, the other person, we've sent a certified letter, tried to contact them. We haven't been able to, but we will continue, because we obviously need to have all 10 on board for the realignment. So we have not given up. I may enlist the chief's help, you know, to make sure that we can find the 10 person, because at this point, they just haven't responded. But we'll get to that one. In the meantime, they have actually began to survey the properties to determine the, on the sidelines of each of the properties, so that they know how to draft the preliminary or the temporary construction easements. Because as you know, we can't just go into people's properties unless we have the permission, so that's what they're doing at this point. And the other piece is Diane and I are actually looking into writing, not looking into, we will be doing, is writing a pre-application for EDA funding as well. So that's what's happening at this point. But we will get to that, 10 person, you know, and the others were very receptive. In fact, they were thrilled. They says, finally, it's going to happen in my lifetime that I will see some work. Seriously, I'm not kidding you. They said, finally, it's going to happen in my lifetime that something is going to be done with the Tanyard Brook.
And that's why it's good to convey the timeline and keep Beta on its toes before I make the motion to continue this further down the line for another update, so we can let the public know in regards to flooding. I just would like to do a little quick commercial for our community development director, that on May 11, there is a workshop on the hazard mitigation plan on the Burnside Building, so if you could put that date in. It's an important topic for our town in regards to flooding. And also, she would love it if you could take a survey. That's online at www.surveymonkey.com/s/bristolhazardmitigationplandupdate. And what that does is give us the feedback when we have these updates, so it's not an aftermath of complaints when residents go, well, did you know this? Did you know that? We want everyone's feedback of problems you have, so we can implement it in the workshops that we currently have. So again, it's May 11, 7 o'clock at the Burnside Building, so we hope everyone can attend, because this is an important issue. And my motion will be, even though that Beta said that it looks like a timeline might be for the end of design work November, Tony, you think maybe end of August, we could get another update, just so we can see if the timeline's going?
We'll have information before that, but let's set it for that. You know, when it's available, I'll make sure it gets back on the agenda.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So we have a motion?
Second.
There's a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item, item H2, also from Councilman Stewart regarding the Medicum Avenue traffic study. You have some correspondence provided by the administrator regarding the Medicum Avenue project status.
Well, thank you for the information in regards to the 90% submission plans that's coming out of the state and you, you know, providing us the intersection of Bayview, which we mentioned last meeting, and also on their docket is Tupelo and Michael Drive on Medicum, and also Chestnut and Anawamsket. What concerns me when I presented our options for a new study is, number one, these are ongoing from the past, and I think we have to really tip the scale to maximize what is the best use for Medicum Avenue for our traffic purposes, because if they're going to go ahead and do these three intersections, did we do our due diligence, and I know Diane has in the past, but I think with the outline and current conditions of our town and our traffic issues, I think we have to revisit it and really push to the state. And I know I talked to Tony about this, and I have our representatives actually going to schedule a workshop with the DOT director, and I will be in communication with your office, Diane and my colleagues, to have that conversation, because this is one example of them doing something, and it's almost, well, here you go, Bristol, but we have much more to see if there's opportunities we can tap into to finally address Medicum once and for all, because, as I said before, if we don't address our traffic issues and we're going full throttle with all our projects and just bring in a lot of more tourism and expanding in our community, I just see devastation. So we really have to be ahead of the curve on this.
For clarity's sake, what we're talking about, when we say the Medicum project or the traffic project, we're talking about left-hand turn lanes at, well, at least on what the update is here, at Bayview and at Michael and Tupelo on Medicum, and then Chestnut and Anawamsket. So specifically, so you can continue to go and someone can take a left-hand turn and have space to do both. So this would make, but Councilman Stewart's point is a really good one, is that if we piecemeal it, we will just have issues down the road, literally, so.
Because as Mr. Shaw said, there's other cross streets all along Medicum that might not be with a light where you can, where they're addressing the intersections. But even so, if on the width of Medicum, like I said, we're not going to be able to do the whole length from the Warren line all the way to the Montauk Bridge, but if there's other middle lanes that have the width, that have cross streets, it still makes the traffic flow much better, instead of just at every intersection they're addressing. So I just want to make sure that we're addressing everything to full capacity, so we can know that we tried our best at that traffic pattern along Medicum for our future, so.
Actually, a letter has been drafted and sent to the new director, so that we can build lines of communication and also, you know, discuss, we're talking about Medicum, but there was a couple other items on the agenda, the bike path that's on the construction currently. And so there is the sidewalks, you know, going north and so forth. So there are some things that I would like to sit, you know, at the table and have a conversation, so we'll build those lines of communication.
Beautiful, beautiful. Thank you once again.
Ed, what's your pleasure on this agenda?
Make a motion to continue this, and I would say a couple of months, maybe? That's, gives ample time.
August meeting?
Later half of July, because right after 4th of July. We don't want to get too flustered in July.
8th or 29th?
8th or 29th.
The 29th.
29th meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item, item H3, requested at the last meeting, is a draft resolution in opposition to the governor's proposed supplemental tax on second homes.
Make a motion, we support this opposition for a resolution, proposed supplemental tax on second homes.
Well, I would say I think this is something we definitely should oppose, and I think it's written well. But you know, I think there's a sort of a basic point that really ought to be mentioned also, that it's important that there be some discipline between the state of Rhode Island and the individual towns. State raises money through sales tax and income tax, and the towns raise their money through real estate taxes. And I don't think the towns should try to have a sales tax or income tax, and I don't think the states should try to have a real estate tax. We've already had two proposals come out of the new administration that have been alarming. One was to have the state more or less take over our moorings, which was brought about by one individual legislator, and I think that's been shot down. We don't need that. We can manage our own moorings a lot better than the state can manage them, and why do we need an extra layer of control? We also don't need the state to have another boat to patrol around, because we in Bristol have the Coast Guard and our own fine harbor patrol. And insofar as the other idea, this one, I just think that it's important we do resist it, and the only thing I'm sorry about is that we're not mentioning in this petition the principle of discipline, separation of jurisdictions.
I'm going to take that as a second?
I did.
Yeah, I think that's a second.
Is that right? Yeah? Okay.
A nice brief second.
No, it was a well-worded second. I'll take it as a well-worded. Is there any other conversation or discussion about this? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is a correspondence from Ford Sayer of 47 Seabreeze Lane, requests council consideration, the support of the Senate Bill 0056 and House Bill 5374 relating to the Code of Ethics, basically requiring the legislature to participate in the Ethics Commission. The draft resolution is provided.
I support this bill and the House bill with everything that's happened in the state. If you really look at 38 studios, Gordon Fox, we need that ethics oversight. I'm in full support. I think this is great.
I support it also. I mean, I spent, as you know, 12 years in the state senate, and at that time, the legislature was under the Ethics Commission, and it came out when, I think as part of separation of powers, is when the judge ruled that it no longer should be there, but I think they should be putting themselves back under their jurisdiction.
I agree.
I'm also going to take that as a second?
Yes, as a second, yes.
Any other discussion?
A brief second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from Joseph Araby and others, members of the economic development team, regarding the economic development element of the town's comprehensive plan.
I think, I thought we were going to have a follow-up workshop on talking about the position. I thought we decided that at the budget, and I think this, and I think that at that meeting, I think we all would agree that the Economic Development Commission and anyone else that's involved should come into this. And I know we had a long discussion when this element of the comp plan had originally presented their information, and I don't know that we necessarily agree from all of it, but what's in here, I think, is something that we all, like, do care about, but I think that would all be best put to this discussion when we have the workshop.
It was well put, Mary. We said that we were going to talk about this, and we had a joint workshop with ourselves and the planning board, so certainly would invite them to be part of this discussion and include them. So I would imagine the appropriate.
Make a motion to receive and file, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item is from Councilwoman Perella regarding information, request of the support of the Bristol Rotary Foundation's East Bay Autism Project.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to just take a second to introduce this, and there are other people who will be here to speak about it. You recall that sometime in the fall, I believe, the Bristol Rotary started a foundation, maybe it was in the summer, and one of the projects that they're taking on is a local autism project to bring services closer to home. There's a steering committee in which I'm a member of, and looking for some seed money to get this project off the ground. So I know Jack Delabrie's here, Bruce Cox, and I saw Mario, I think he's here probably for something else, but he's also on the steering committee, Mario Andrade. So with that, if I could just turn it over to Bruce for a second and do a little commercial about the project and help gather some information.
Welcome.
Councilman, thank you. Mr. President, Chairman, Bruce Cox, I am president of the Rotary Foundation, Rotary Charities Foundation. It is a separate entity from the club itself, but was established by members of the club to work with the club to facilitate greater fundraising capability through the utilization of a 501(c)(3) foundation. We participated in a dialer program. We're participating right now in a function that actually is benefiting Sale Newport in part, and the foundation to try to develop a core of funds there. The autism project, that is, the Autism Project's East Bay Support Center, is a concept that we came to realize it needed addressing. There are more than 200 people in this general community, the East Bay community, that are dealing with autistic family members. It's difficult enough to raise children. When you are faced with the issue of raising an autistic child, it is a lifelong commitment. We have put out on, once again, on Survey Monkey, a survey to try to analyze what is their demand and what is, is it really something that needs to be addressed? And that survey came back with good results in the sense that it was clear, there is 93% of those responding said they need social skill group training for those with autistic issues. 74 needed direction towards trained doctors to help them, because this whole addressing autistic personalities, autistic disorders, is not necessarily, it's not a broken bone. It's difficult. The 62%, we're looking for parent group support, because, you know, how do you deal with it? How do you handle this? Our goal is to try to establish a center for autistic support groups, and doing this not as a burden to the towns, but as a self-supporting entity. It's the goal, but the 501(c)(3), it's one of its projects undertaken. But anything takes startup time and effort and money. Doing the survey was obviously something to do online, but it takes time and money to publish these things. And that's where our goal is, to establish a little bit of a core seed money. Our very aggressive goal is to hopefully have this place for this coming fall. Jac has been very, you know, tirelessly working on this. He is a dynamo, to put it politely. So this is what we're all about in this particular project, the 501(c)(3). The 501(c)(3) is for general purposes, we think globally, we act locally, and that's what we're here before you with.
So with that, I would just like to say that, you know, the Autism Project Rhode Island, which would be the, who does most of the support, they're located in Johnston, and it's quite a distance on the, this would be one of their, I think they've branched out a little bit to South County, but this would be one of the first efforts to try to get services closer to homes. If you're just getting home from work, you're not necessarily going to turn around and go back to Johnston, and so it's hard for people from this area to get the support that they need. So I would ask that the council support $1,000 donation from our contingency, which I believe we have more than enough money at this point to be able to do that.
I'll second the motion.
I think it's spectacular, and I'll support it 100%.
Absolutely. This is a topic...
You can do more if you want to.
I think it's spectacular, and I'll support it 100%.
No, this, I'm so glad you're doing this, Bruce, and your committee, because this is one topic that is just evolving nationwide, and perfect timing, Sunday, I know they had their walk where they raised substantial amount of funds.
They had the autism walk there, indeed, the members of the Rotary Club are working on having a cross, walk across, jog across Mount Hope Bridge run. There are people that are going to have autism teams for that, to fundraise for autism, as well as other things. That's sort of a little side pitch here about the fact that there will be, you know, first time ever, July 12th, a cross-the-bridge walk, started by Rotarians, Matt Hayes, Gina Campbell-Helm, and Ryan Fonsika, they were the spearheads on that effort. You know, we are, our goal is to work here, help Bristol County. The issue with the center here is transport. You know, how do you get, it's a little estate, but it's got a big bay in the way, it's a wonderful bay. It also has a knot called Sea of Providence, so we have to go from this area to the northwest area. Anyone who's from here knows, it's nearly impossible many times a day. So that's the whole goal, is trying to get the ability to have services here locally.
Bruce, is there, do you know the email, I mean, the Survey Monkey, the address to, for people that may want to do the survey and express their ideas about what type of services they'd like?
Certainly have that here. It's www.surveymonkeycontinuousletters.com/s/d, as in David, 33, K as in kite, B as in Bruce, T as in Thomas, 8.
If I wasn't able to write that down...
I know, did you bring up what to call it, or do you want to...
Could we get that to you?
How would I get that? Or if I was interested in taking that survey, or someone was?
We will get that to the town administrator, who can then put it on, direct it to the person to perhaps put it on the town website.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's funny, because you mentioned more funds, and I was just reading in the article a professional golfer, Ernie Els, which is close to his heart with his child with autism, and he started a foundation in tandem with, you know, the organization. Down in Flora, they have their yearly golf tournament with retired and professional golfers, and it's good, because they come with their wallets, and raised over $1 million in the fourth year doing that, so...
That's fantastic.
You know, I know a friend that has a friend that plays in that tournament, and sometimes when you write letters, and, you know, "We're over here, don't mind giving some money to our charity in Chapter 2," so...
That'd be wonderful.
And it's also referring to you golf, because we're going to get you down to that fundraiser.
I don't think I could get in that tournament, number one. I don't think my wallet's that big, but...
Oh, I was just informed, the survey is actually on the school website.
Okay.
So you can go there now and see the survey there. Thank you, Mario.
Thank you. So we have a motion, we have a second to support this. My only request is that you come back in front of us in X amount of time and share some of the successes that you have.
I hope to do so. Thank you very much.
So we have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, item I4, you have provided by the town bond council, borrowing resolutions.
If I may, and Tony, if you'd like to comment also on this borrowing resolution in regards to the Rhode Island Clean Water Finance Agency, and we're discussing our road improvement plan, and this is attached to that same topic, and in regards to Blue Boulevard Road Project, and I think it had to be part of the application process with the state, that the monies get attached to the certain project that was on the same application. So it's good to tell the residents, when they question why so much money is being allocated to a certain project, it was part of the application process, and to deem, you know, for the state to approve it and give it to certain communities, it had to be crafted in a certain way, and Blue Boulevard actually fell under those perimeters, and that's why this money's being allocated, in that amount, just for that project, because we know all the roads have to be done, and we're going to, it's a work in progress, but you could see that how little money, or a lot of money, just addresses just one road, you know, so...
Well put.
What is the estimate for cost of this?
Baloo Boulevard? You're looking at approximately 500.
500,000?
Yes, because that's in very bad disrepair, so it all has to be dug up, and actually, they're doing some soil tests right now, some borings, in order to determine exactly the needs there, but, you know, it's not good at all.
And how does that fit in your priority assessment for the entire town?
Well, that particular one, because also, as Councilman Stur already pointed out, we had to designate specifically for where the funds would be used. Also, what would be the economic impact?
No, I'm just going more basic. Suppose you had a lot of money, what would you first do in the town? Would it be this?
No, we actually have a list from Beta Engineering, they did a complete study of all the roads in the town.
That's my question. How does this particular necessity fit within the priorities of that assessment?
That was based on that assessment, you know, as a priority.
Is this the top priority?
Well, it was not the very top, but because of all the business in the area and the economic impact that it has, we needed to address that area immediately.
But it was, like I said, counselor, it was part of the perimeter, it's part of the application process. When you go in front of the state, they look for outliers, such as how it was crafted for Blue Boulevard and the corridor for our industrial park. They take that into consideration to be favorable, so we could get such grants like this, or low-interest loans, and that's why I said, it all has to, that's the condition the state puts on it, not the administrator of ourselves. That's why I specified that it is all allocated, because it has to be attached to that application that was processed, and we were granted. But I also agree with you, counselor, that, and I, we did mention at the last meeting that Beta is starting their first phase this summer, and some list of roads that, well, they're all priority, but we have to start the project, and this brings me to another conversation that I know we don't want to have, and Tony and I and Julie and my colleagues talked about this, but we just spending and allocating some from other bonds on behalf of the residents that approved, but this is a multi-multi-million dollar project for our infrastructure going forward, and I think more bonds might have to be on the next election that I'm going to push for, because we have to continue this every year. As I stated before, we talk about the economy and industrial park and whatnot, but, you know, Bristol's not as good as if your house is falling down. I don't think anyone wants to come to your town, you know, if you don't have your house in order. So these are the, and I don't want to be the bearer of bad news every meeting by the doom and gloom of this news, it's just, we have a lot to be proud of, but we have to be open and honest about what's in front of us and what we have to address. So with that, I make a motion that we approve this borrowing resolution for Blue Boulevard project.
I'll second the motion. We need better roads. I think this is a good...
So we have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the town council, is from the treasurer regarding the Colt Fund, item I5.
I'm going to start this one off. This is in front of us for, to improve, or this question came up, to improve the field at Colt School. If you look at your packet and through the pictures in here, you can see what used to be grass and is now pretty much dirt. The PTO, which two members are right in front of us right now, and I know that they're going to share some information, has been working on this for about two and a half years to find a solution to it. The school has worked on this and was, actually had intentions of replacing what's there with some new grass, some brand-new real grass. But the problem is, is that, and it was a short-term fix, and it's an appropriate fix for the school, but it was not an appropriate long-term fix. So what I'm talking about is, this PTO reached out first to the school through George Simmons, and then with Walter, with DePont Landscaping, and asked, "What do we do?" And this, the answer was, put in astroturf, for lack of a better term, fake grass, and what the PTO and the school and the principal of the school, Kate, over there, thank you, went in front of the HTC to get the approval to do this, and in fact, they do have that approval. So I'm going to, I'm going to get this back to the Colt Fund, I promise, so...
Mr. Chairman, before we get into this, could I just ask one basic question?
Certainly.
Has this proposal been through the school committee for recommendation?
Yes, and not through...
Where is that recommendation?
You must let me finish, so, but I certainly understand where you're going with this. I reached out to Mario, who's, Dr. Mario Andrade, our superintendent, and I said it went through the school system, and I, excuse me, I misspoke. What I wanted to say was, I spoke with Mario, I spoke with the vice chair of the school committee, and I think Mario's going to share some information on that, but before he does, I want to share the rest of this and why this is in front of us. Whether it's, the appropriateness of putting this in here, they've done their vetting, and you're certainly going to hear from them, but talking about the Colt Fund, this fund, as you can see with the paperwork in front of us, started with $100,000, is now approximately $2.8 million, and this fund is specifically for the maintenance of the building and the grounds. So it is absolutely appropriate for this money. This fund is actually under the control, and I'm going to use Julie's words on this, as a board of trustees, as the town council has approval on this, has the sole approval on this, but I don't think that it's appropriate that this council works autonomously and suggests that we do or not do something without the school's immense input on it. In fact, that's why they're here tonight. So this was a lot of hard work by the PTO, this was a lot of hard work by a lot of people. Walter and DePont and George Simmons are all saying this is an appropriate improvement to the property. Am I correct with that, Walter? Okay. So Mario, you wanted to share some information, please?
Yeah, just a little background. Hi, I'm Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I'm Dr. Mario Andrade, I'm the superintendent of schools. Thank you for entertaining this topic tonight. Just a little history on the conversation, and it kind of goes into what was just mentioned in number three in the autism project, is that this is an example of bigger, broader partnerships in insulating the pipeline. This is not only a school project, but also a community project. In talking about partnerships, I want to give a lot of thanks to the Colt Andrews PTO of bringing this forward. As Mr. Chairman said, we've been discussing this for the last two years. The PTO has been researching solutions to that field, and if you drive by there today, you can see it's a dust bowl, so we need to move forward. About a year ago, when I assumed the superintendency in the district, I think we were already in communication, what is the fix going to be? And we started a timeline on who do we need to communicate with, and the PTO approached me, and we started raising money and going through the process, and as I found out new information, referring them to the HTC, referring to Walter on how to do fundraising, they kept on researching and going forward. They were supposed to actually bring their plans in front of the budget subcommittee of the school committee last week during April vacation. Happened to be April vacation, we postponed that meeting until May, so it hasn't gone in front of the school committee yet. And what really changed in the last probably month or so, is really the conversation about the Colt Fund. Up until this point, we were moving along, thinking we're going to have to raise money and grants to pay for a solution, and then low and behold, through their research, they came across a revenue source, the Colt Fund, and, which brings us up to tonight. And so the kind of conversation is, what's the purpose of the Colt Fund, and how is it distributed? As Mr. Chairman said, I think there is, the town council is the owner, or the board of trustees in this fund, but I think from the school committee perspective, it's kind of what's that protocol. So what we're asking from the school department tonight is to listen to their awesome proposal. They have done so much work on it, it is a viable solution. Colt field has gone through pavement, grass, pavement again, and I think back to grass, and now dirt. So nothing has really been sustainable, and through their research, I think this is a viable option. But going forward, I think the logic question from the school department is, when there are funds or projects at the Colt School, what are going to be the protocols and what's going to be, as Mr. Chairman said, the school committee's voice? So we're hoping that tonight there'll be a discussion, you'll believe in the project as I believe in the project, and then it'll go back to the budget subcommittee for their approval and voice as well. But that being said, I cannot commend these two women enough for their diligence, their research, and their advocacy for children in the Colt School, in Bristol in general as a community, because it's not only Colt Andrews students using that field between 8:00 and 3:00, it's also after school, just driving here. Tonight, there was town residents on the field utilizing that area. So it is a community project, and I think that's how we have to start thinking about moving forward, of being innovative, and those bigger, broader partnerships, and seeking new ways to fund resources. As you stated here, it doesn't cost the town payers, and it doesn't cost the school committee to meet the goals of our students in our community in this project. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to these fine young women, because they are the passionate ones, and to hear their energy, you need just to listen to them.
Thank you. I'm Amy Bratsos, president of the Colt Andrews Parent Group. With me tonight is Sheila Ellsworth, our treasurer, as well as many parents and even students of our school, and we also have our principal, Kate Wolf. We've worked very closely with Walter Burke, so we could, any questions, Walter could probably answer as well, and Dr. Andrade. As he said, this field has gone through a lot of changes, and since the school reopened, they've tried really hard to put a field in there. They've put grass seed down two times. The first time, they had the kids stay off of the field for a full year, brought the kids back on, beautiful grass, it was gone. Those 400 little feet every day playing on it, just can't, that grass can't withstand that. They tried seed again, and then three years ago, they put sod down, looked beautiful, but once again, nothing can really grow there with the amount of children from our school and from our community. And this is all about our children, the children of Bristol, the children of Colt Andrews. They need a safe and healthy place to play, and as it is now, it is a dust bowl. Children with respiratory problems can't go out on the field. I think there's a picture in your packet, you can barely see the children, because they're surrounded in the cloud of dirt. Many days, the field has to be closed off, because it's muddy, it's, there's just so many issues with it, that they can't even play there. Being in the downtown community, we have a very small space there, and so we have a nice little playground, and this one area for the kids to run and play and get their physical activity that they need every day. So with Walter's help and doing a lot of research, and many of these parents helped with, we found that this turf was the best solution. We were open to anything, but we found that this was the best solution for the children of our school. The Colt Fund was, after some research, we found that that could be a very good option for us, so we're here tonight, hoping that you will grant us that request and put a field in for our kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for them?
Just simple questions, that probably everyone wants to know is...
Sure.
Just simple questions that probably everyone wants to know is, the life expectancy, and just explaining about the new alternative of how it's gonna last, and, you know, instead of just not having, having the kids have a playground because it's closed, them having to wait for new grass, and us spending more and more money on, you know, the repairs. And also, I have done research on such, you know, alternatives, and just telling the audience that it is safe measures health-wise for the children.
Correct.
Just so everyone knows what we're talking about.
Yes, I'll refer that to Sheila, because she worked very closely with the vendors on that.
So the warranty for the actual product is seven years, but he has product that's right now that's out there that's 10 years, and with kind of the same, similar number of kids, it looks great. So he said that you probably could get 15 years, and you wouldn't have to rip up the whole thing, you would just have to cut out the pieces, like the runway, he said, like the area that the kids are running up and down. You would just have to cut that out, and it actually gets adhered to the existing, in the same grain as the other is, so you can't tell that it's been taken out. The other thing is, one of my concerns was like vandalism, like what if someone spray paints or gum gets in it, or like how do you get any of that stuff out? The spray paint actually can come out with a, they have this commercial chemical that actually won't harm the turf itself, that actually can remove the spray paint itself, and gum can come out with just mild soap. And the maintenance of it is very limited. He's gonna, it's a small broom, it's $350, it's the small broom that goes on the bottom of a weed whacker, like an attachment to a weed whacker, and it gets, it gets brushed, like almost like combed out once a year. And he had said he was gonna like throw that in and then do it for two years. But it's very minimal maintenance to it, and Walter can attest, we've worked on every type of product known to man, but this product was the most non-maintenance kind of that we could come up with, and that actually, quality-wise, that could withstand 400 kids running on it.
A question on that. You know, some of the NFL and college football fields have found that with astroturf, they don't dry very quick. If you do this, I think you gotta be very careful to either have some grade or some drains, because if you just put it in flat or depressed, it's not gonna dry.
Well, what happens is it gets, a consolidated gravel gets put down, like a dense gravel that actually is porous, and then this gets rolled out like a carpet. So everything can seep in, kind of like grass.
Yeah, but the football fields have found if they're not careful about grading and drainage, that the, it stays wet a long time. That's why a lot of them went back to, well, they went back to grass in some cases for two reasons. One was that that I've mentioned, and the other was, the grass is more forgiving to the knees running on it.
I just had a question about the winter and frost heaving and all that. How is that, how does it handle with all the snow and everything?
He says that it's actually totally, Walter probably can talk to it more, but it, he said that it won't, it won't upheave, it will actually stay flat, because they're gonna excavate everything that's there and then put down there.
So they dig out a base, they put that base, like you were saying, the gravel, they kind of, almost like a patio in a way? You build it up, and then you put the turf over it?
Correct.
So the water is, you know, come right through, it could drain with ease?
Well, you've probably thought this through.
There's a cushion of rubber that goes underneath the grass. The other thing that's very unique about this playground grass is that it doesn't have those little black rubber beads that are on sport fields. And there's a lot of question and speculation about what those black rubber beads do. My concern was, dealing with grammar school-aged kids, you're gonna have kids rolling around in it and getting out of breath and going like this. And I, and we were concerned about those black rubber beads going into kids' mouths and being, you know, being swallowed. But this product doesn't have any of that in it. And it, it's a little bit of a longer grass, so it's really gonna look more natural than a sports turf field. I think it's the only solution.
Sheila's gonna bring up a sample.
Other than putting, yeah, other than putting asphalt down, you know.
Have you all studied any other playgrounds that have this?
There are a lot of playground areas, this is the product that they use.
Where's the nearest one you can look at?
In football fields or sport fields.
I know there's one that was recently done in Fall River, under, underneath a playground at a, at a park. In doing some research, a lot of inner-city schools I found, Chicago, San Francisco, where most of their children's play surfaces are asphalt, they have a lot of initiatives going where they're turning the asphalt into these turf fields. So a lot of bigger cities are trying to give their kids as well a safer place to play. So they are becoming part of what elementary schools are doing for their kids.
Halsey brought up a good point too about the drainage, and in fact, this is actually more porous than what's currently there, so it'll actually improve the situation.
Yes, because as we know, drainage is kind of an issue at Colt School, and I believe the way the fund is set up is to, you know, take care of Colt School and its surroundings, and with the way the drainage is now, or if it was asphalt, we would possibly be doing more damage to Colt School with the amount of runoff that is there. So this could hopefully even help that situation.
What about the fire, you know, does this burn easily? The fire chief wanted to know that. Is this, is it fire resistant?
Fire resistant, yeah. It has, we have the warranties and stuff.
Is there a particular rating? Did you, Chief, did you have some specifics? Well, I mean, isn't it a particular fire, I'm assuming that it has some sort of fire-resistant rating so that, you know, somebody's not gonna go toss a match and the whole thing's gonna burn one day?
No, they said it's not. Walter probably can talk to it.
It doesn't burn?
We'll take, we'll take a look at the specs on it.
Okay.
It should be, it should be UL listed and such, so it'd be safe for kids and everything else.
Yes.
Right.
If it does start, it wouldn't melt and hurt anyone.
Right. And as I said, they're putting them in a lot of schools, so I, I'm hoping that they're checking that.
Sheila and Amy have both mentioned a few times about "he," meaning there was a particular vendor. It's certainly clear that to all that it would have to go through its correct process and go out to bid and get, you know, whatever has to go through. The school committee would have to do their correct steps to make sure that this is the appropriate vendor, such and so forth. But I know you did a lot of homework on this.
Yes, so we had a few, Walter was there a couple times, George, we had some vendors come out to give us estimates, because we, at the beginning, we didn't know what we were looking at, how much money we were talking about. So we got a few estimates. The company that put the playground in behind Colt School is who we've been working closely with, answering a lot of our questions, but I understand that, you know, there's going out to bid and all that stuff, but we've kinda had somebody that's really helped us.
Well, I think there are sort of three considerations to this. First of all, I, as a council, would like to see a written report of the school committee's judgment of this before I take a position, and I wanna hear from the school committee. And secondly, I recall that when we did that wonderful job of rehabbing Colt Andrews, at the end of that project, there was quite a wish list of other details that couldn't get done because of the lack of funding, and I think we need to also consider that. And so, I need for one council to see those items addressed. And then, of course, the third thing is, is how much we as a fiduciary body are willing to take, whether we take 4% of the old total or 4% of the new total, it makes quite a difference in the amount of money.
So let's speak to a couple of those things. First, is Julie did the report, and I'm sure Julie, if you wanted to add to, actually, Julie, why don't you add to that? What specifically did I want you to add to?
Thank you.
Halsey mentioned about what appropriate dollars, and I would speak to that and say that Julie had mentioned that to come up with a particular percentage was, was the goal here. So to back up too, if you see it on our agenda, it says about the Colt Fund, part of my want to have this on here is, was also go forward, is that, assuming that we all see the value of taking the next step on this, next year, something else will come forward. So for example, the beautiful statues, some used to be there, some are there, some are not, the marble on the side of the building. This fund, in my eyes, would be an appropriate fund to pull from, to fix things that wouldn't necessarily be fixed. Maybe there's an old chandelier in there that we just can't afford to do right now. The school committee has things that are more important, like books, to fix. So this is a wonderful fund to take that. And I think it's really important also to mention that the dollars taken out of here are from dividends. So that means the principal is not being touched, and if you use Julie's numbers, we're talking about $120,000 for round numbers, round, round numbers. So the reason why we talk like that is that this fund is in with a multitude of funds of the town, so it's very difficult to kinda piece them out, but generally speaking, it's approximately about a, would you agree with that number?
I can speak to that a little bit more.
Go ahead.
So the fund is currently held in a mixture of fixed income and equities, and the total market value as of 3/31 was about $2.8 million, but it's important to note that of that, we are reserving about $2.2 million to pay remaining debt service on a loan that the town entered into with Colt, with the school district. So the school district is currently providing us with housing reimbursement, state aid checks that they receive, and they'll be doing that, I think, for one more year to the tune of about $240,000. So that's why when you hear the numbers being tossed around, it's a little bit more complicated, there's a lot going on with it. On a typical endowment-type account, the recommendation is to not take more than 4% of the growth in the fund in one fiscal year, or one, one year. In this case, you know, we don't necessarily want to use the 4% number on the market balance because we need to reserve a certain amount of that to pay down our debt service. So when Nathan says 120 is 115,000, that's of the 2.8 million, but the, you know, on the, on the balance that's really there, the 840,000, it's closer to 33,000. So I know there's a lot of numbers being thrown out, but when we looked at this and the appropriate use of the funds and what's been utilized for the maintenance of Colt School, I think there was, there was somewhat of a consensus that this is an appropriate use of the funds, but I think it is a good idea for the council to either discuss tonight or to continue the discussion, to talk about how they're gonna proceed going forward, how much the council is comfortable with distributing in any given year, and if you wanna put parameters on the types of maintenance projects, if, whether it be, you know, capital projects above some dollar amount. So those are, I think, the types of issues if you wanna take it on a case-by-case basis.
In speaking with the superintendent and the vice chair, some of the things came up that weren't appropriate, and it was given by them, which was painting. It's not appropriate for this fund. That's, that's for the school committee, and that should come out of their budget. But things that are, as we've talked about, a few of them are the Tiffany lamps in there. There's some beautiful things in there that this fund could bring back to life, and actually, there's a beautiful thing out in the backyard that is not beautiful, but could be by making it safe for the kids to use. And I think that was all the other point of this, was that this was the starting point, and then next year, have a process in which people can come in front of the council, school committee, members, family, whoever, concerned citizens, and say, "I'd love to see if we could restore that back to the way it once used to be." And this fund is there to do that, and again, using dividends, not the principal, and not all of the dividends. And then if we have a year that nobody comes in front of us, that stays there, and the fund grows again and again. And if the school comes back, the school committee comes back and says, "We need to borrow against it because of X to do this improvement," then the council makes that call at that time. So, go ahead, Mario.
Just as one point of clarification, 100% in support of this project, but as you just mentioned, protocol and process going forward. So as Mr. Harrisoff mentioned earlier, I think there still needs to be a school committee voice, and with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, you said, if someone comes in front of you with a school project that's gonna tap into the Colt Fund, I think there needs to be adequate school committee voice in that process so that it's, you know, not someone coming to the Colt Fund, to the town council, and then going to the school committee saying, "We wanna do this," where it's not on our priority list of improvements to that school. So I think, moving forward, I think the next steps, hopefully tonight, that there is a vote in support of this project. Our next steps are to go in front of the budget subcommittee, then the full school committee for their approval, and moving forward, ultimatum bid in the month of June, July, hopefully breaking ground in, in August, and then we have a new playground for September when the students return. So that's our timeline, but I just wanna reiterate the importance, I think, on behalf of the school committee and school department, to have a voice in the process on the utilization of the funds.
I agree. So I'm gonna, to, to put this all into perspective, what does it do? It assists the school, and we're working with the school, and we had some challenges with joint finance committee and not the numbers that the school was looking for. This is an opportunity to show that the town and the school works together. This is a great opportunity to do that. Second one, it's really important, this isn't taxpayer dollars. This is, I hate to say free, but I'm gonna go there, I'm gonna say it. It's free money. It's free money. It's money that can be used to, the school is gonna spend $13,000 to, to put new grass there. They don't have to spend it this year, that's wonderful. I'm glad that you can save that money, and this is a wonderful opportunity to do that, in my eyes. 15 to 20 years is the guesstimate of the life expectancy of this, and you say, "Well, what do we do then?" Well, we have a Colt Fund. In 15 or 20 years, if we need to do this again and it's appropriate, then we can use the Colt Fund, or at least consider it. Did I mention it wasn't tax dollars? Did I mention that the kids, it's safe for the kids, and if you go there right now, it's not necessarily safe for the kids? So I think everybody wins, nobody loses, it doesn't cost anybody anything, and it's a wonderfully appropriate use of the funds.
I would have to agree with the chairman, I think it's a smart use of funds. I was one of those kids that grew up, went to Colt School, but it was on the asphalt, and it was terrible. I have to admit, we weren't physically active, we were, everybody was a little bit nervous, you didn't wanna get out there and, and have a lot of fun, you know? And I just think it's a, it's a great move, and I, I think all your hard work is, it's definitely a needed, needed change. From the photos, I've seen you've put the grass, and I've driven by, and it's, it's a mess, it hasn't worked.
Right.
And I think this is a nice solution. Actually, I'd like to use this in my front yard. I have a lot of areas where I can't get grass.
Get a few samples, put 'em together.
It's to grow. I don't know what you do, but maybe this is a solution. But anyway.
I concur with you.
And I also applaud the PTO and your efforts, all this time for raising the funds and by your hard work, see how doors are being opened, but as the chairman and superintendent had stated in council, and Harrisoff of the vetting process, this opens the dialogue for this fund to execute in a manner, I think, of the conversation going back to the school department, coming back to us, but also going forward, as our treasurer said, of this council has to come up with a plan. I know our treasurer, I have faith that she's very conservative, but the dividends and going forward, a policy, so maybe through the vetting process and the timeline, as you suggested, it'll all fall into place, all the answers will be answered, and we can, you know, have a solid motion to address everything we're talking about tonight, because I am in support also, so.
I think it's a, I'm glad that you found, identified a funding source, because it sure beats like writing a bunch of grants and not knowing.
We've done that.
I know, I know you have, but you don't know like what's gonna happen and what's gonna hit, you know? And this would give you the ability to actually have a plan and get it in place for a certain date, you know?
Right.
How long does it take to install approximately for that particular project?
It's been about three weeks, three to four weeks.
Three to four weeks.
So if we could do it over the summer, that would be ideal, so that when the kids come back, as Mario said, it would be ready for them.
So I think we should vote on this piece and then go back and decide the other aspects of, you know, this, this process going forward, so that you can get the bid and all that stuff out there.
Thank you.
And hopefully do it in the summer.
Thank you.
So if we, if-
The school committee comes back to you with a request.
March, did you wanna speak to this?
I'm just gonna reiterate what, what Mario said, which is, it's not about whether it's a good idea or not, actually, it's about the process. And it's about, we have a process for all of our schools when they want to do something, and they come, they bring the project to the budget subcommittee, budget facility subcommittee, and then the budget facility subcommittee sends it to the school committee, and the school committee votes on it. And then the school committee would come to the town council- And then the budget facility subcommittee sends it to the school committee, and the school committee votes on it. And then the school committee would come to the town council and ask for the funds to be taken out of the Colt Fund to pay for the playground. And I'd like to see that procedure continued because if you break that with one school, if Cataris comes, they could come to you without coming to us. And one of the reasons that we do that is that it's our responsibility to maintain whatever goes on school grounds. So we need to be, we need to be, we need to make sure that we can afford it and that we think it's a good idea. And I'm not saying whether it's a good idea or not, and I'm not asking you tonight to say that it's a good idea or not. I'm asking you to allow us to vet it and then come back to you as a school committee and say, "We agree with you. We think this is a great idea. We'd like to take money out of the Colt Fund to do it." And do it that way. So that's really where I'm going with that. It's not about whether I agree or don't agree. And it's not, and I'm not speaking for the school committee. I'm just speaking as the chairman of the budget facility subcommittee and knowing what we've done in the past. And it just makes it a lot easier for all involved because we have a number of schools. And even though the Colt School is the one that has this fund, we still have to take into consideration when other schools want to do a project. So, for example, when KMS did that outdoor playground outside of their lunchroom, they came before the budget subcommittee, and then they came before the school committee. The school committee on both occasions gave them the go-ahead to do it, and they did it. But that's how we've done it. So I would just ask or reiterate what Mario said, which is, there's a policy and a procedure. And I'd really appreciate it if you'd let us come back and say, "We want this." Vice, nobody on the school committee, with the exception of maybe individuals, have seen the plan. It has never been presented to us in its entirety. And I think it's appropriate that it be presented to us in its entirety before we spend money on it. That's all I'm trying to say.
Well, Mario, I'd just like to add to that, Marge, that I think what you say is exactly where the process should go. But furthermore, traditionally, the school committee has had a role in the fiduciary consideration of the Colt Fund. And I think part of your deliberation should be advice to the council on how much to take from the fund if you do back the project.
Well, I think that would go to a policy that you would create as a council as to how you would want to have that, the decision-making done on that fund. I don't disagree with you.
We'd like your advice about it because in this memo, we've got two different ideas, 114,000 and 34,000. So your advice on that would also be good for us to have.
Actually, I'm going to stop right there. That's actually, I don't know if I agree with that part of it.
I'm not sure, I want to go there.
I'm going to finish this.
Yeah.
There was a request for up to 65, so I don't think there was any clarity issues there. And the second part, too, is that I think it's really important to say that the process is important. I agree with you. I think it should go through that process. But I know that the PTO worked with the principal of the school, with Mario, certainly had multiple conversations with the vice chair and others. So there has been wonderful collaboration and lots of conversation about it. But I do agree that it must go through its correct steps with you. And I don't think it's this council's, and certainly not mine, to suggest that we would tell you what to do or what not to do. But what I would love to be able to do this evening is say that if you decide it's appropriate, then we support it and the money is there for you to use if you, if you think it's appropriate.
No, I get that, Nathan. And I didn't mean to imply that you were doing any of the things that you talked about. And it's just about the whole picture. And I'm just looking at it from the eye, not the school committee, because the school committee, short of having a discussion last week about the fact that the Colt Fund might be available, has not vetted the project. So I'm just asking that we follow the same procedure that we follow with all the other schools in the district. That's all.
Mario, you wanted to share something?
Yeah. If, um, just for tonight, and I guess to be more efficient in the process, I think what I would look for tonight is that there would be a motion and acceptance that this request would be approved contingent upon the school committee approval so that what's going to happen in a month, the school committee is going to say, "Do we have the money? Let's go back to the town council and make sure the money's going to be released with the plan, and then we'll come back and vote on it." So I think if there's a vote tonight saying that the money is going to be released depending on the school committee's approval of the plan, I think that might actually expedite the process so that we can come back and here's the plan, and then the money's released at that point. And then we have all the approvals, and we can go out to bid, and hopefully the students will have a playground by September.
Julie, did you want to add something?
Just as you're getting ready to make that motion, I don't know if you want to clarify whether you're going to take the total cost or the total cost less the amount that they've fundraised. I don't know if you want to discuss that tonight. Because they did a great job fundraising. They fundraised over $7,000.
They did. And I thought that an appropriate motion, if the council is amenable to this, was up to 65. And depending on what bidding process happens, you go through the steps, and if you find out it's, for example, you find that you only need to spend 50,000, great news. So, you know, I mean, great news. So give you that. What I would love to see us do is, it's already been said very well, is give you that opportunity when you say it's appropriate and yes, that you can just take the next step and you don't need to come in front of us again. So what's this council's pleasure?
I make the motion that we authorize the up to 65,000 from the Colt Fund to be used for the playground at Colt Andrews School contingent upon the approval of the school committee. That, that's summed it up correctly?
That's...
Yeah.
I'll second. Oh, both Tim and I will second.
So there's a motion and a second. I'm going to add something to that, not to the motion, but in regards to moving forward, some great points were brought up, is that there should be more discussion, and we will have more discussion with the school committee, the superintendent, so we can hear all suggestions. And then what do we do moving forward? So if someone has an idea about improving something in the school and it's an appropriate use of this, what is the step to talk? Who do you talk to? What do you do when you have a good idea that these funds are appropriate? So we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion?
Yes. I'd like to just say that I'm not going to vote for this or I'm not going to vote against it. I'm not going to vote until I get the recommendation from the school committee.
Okay.
To that, to that point, I don't know. Maybe I'm just looking at this differently, is it's contingent upon these funds from the town council because without these funds, obviously, you can't go forward. And with that said, if the school committee decides they don't want to do it, they're just not going to do it. I don't think, they could come in front of us, but they're just choosing not to use this money from this fund. But because of the timeframe and according to get it, I believe because of the meetings and scheduling and whatnot, it's contingent upon, like the superintendent said, to make a smooth process going forward for this project. So everything goes accordingly. And it's no disrespect to the school committee, and it was well said and communicated going forward. But also what you said is it has to be clarified between us and the school committee going forward on some concrete issues that the treasurer brought up. But I just feel that it, the balls, the turf's in the school committee's court right now.
And I apologize for that. I've never done this before. I didn't know we had to go before HDC. So with every turn we took and something was presented, we followed through with that. And because of April vacation, that's the only reason we had to table that. You know, we got HDC's approval in March, and the next budget meeting was in April during vacation, so we asked to move it to May. But we were already in the midst of researching the Colt Fund. So I apologize for the timing being off and coming here before school committee. But I think it was just the way the calendar worked, and I apologize for that.
I don't think it's like a problem because if the school committee says, "This is not a priority and we don't want you to do it," then you're not going to be able to do it.
Exactly.
And I think, you know, the fact that we only have, I believe, one meeting in May, it works out better to just do contingent upon the approval and take it from there.
That works for us.
Moving forward. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't oppose, but I pass. I don't vote.
Absteing? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, don't forget your turp.
Yes.
For the next, next presentation. This is for the...
I know, you may have to, yeah, I may.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you don't mind, if you don't mind.
It'd be all of our loans could be.
Cold School Water Bill is going to look real good. I mean...
This is nice stuff, but the way they're building is to build it like that.
Lou.
The next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council. This is item I-6 from the town administrator, requests a resolution in support of the governor's job plan.
Tony.
Go ahead. Thanks, Sheila. You do want me to address this? Okay, yes. I did put it before you. Yes. Yes. Based on the communication from the governor to my, to me, you know, requesting support for the items, you know, maintaining the current municipal funding formula, adding sources to municipal revenue, rebuilding our schools, and ensuring 21st century infrastructure throughout the state, helping cities and towns innovate, and making K-12 investments and expand pre-K. Based on those items, the, I am in support. But obviously, this is something from the council, you know, if you feel that you want to support this with a resolution as well. And I'm looking at those items. I'm not looking at the entire budget because I know we have some issues with that, as we already voted against one of them this evening, and I fully understand that. However, these items here are very important to, to the communities as a whole, so I solicit your, your support for this.
Well, Tony, I've scoured this very carefully to see whether or not there's any indication in here that the money to do these good things is going to come from us. Because this is all positive, but I hope it doesn't also mean they're going to steal our taxes of real estate and so forth.
Oh, no, I'm not in support of that either. So, and obviously, that is not one of the items.
I really didn't find anything here that says that that is included.
That's correct.
I hope it isn't included by inference.
But isn't that, yeah, but isn't that how she's going to fund her plan? I mean, I don't have a problem with any of these items on here in themselves, but I think all those other items are how she'd have the money to fund these pieces.
Tony, talk to me about something. I had a couple of concerns.
Sure.
Maintaining the current municipal funding formula. I know that we've dropped by about 100, was it 120,000 this year? It would seem like that would not be something that we'd want to support. So our, our state funding went down, right, by about 120. So I'm concerned about supporting that part of it because is that a, is that a continuing thing? Have we leveled off? Are we going the other way? Do you know what I mean?
Well, very good question, and you are very right. I mean, obviously, it was pretty evident, you know, the information that we got there, there was a decline in funding there. Although looking, okay, despite, looking at the deficit that currently the state is facing, you know, what they're trying to do is uphold the existing funding and at least not, not hit us again or have another decline going forward.
No, but I agree with the chairman. I think that if we approve this, it doesn't say we couldn't put in a remark here, and item one, that we believe the money should be based on the previous funding formula rather than this more recently derived one.
I appreciate you sending this forward to us, I mean, because there's a lot of good ideas and whatnot, and it's ongoing process. And I know we keep saying it because we're from the town of Bristol, but, and I don't want to be ill-fated towards the governor because she has some good implementations and conversations with her I do support. There are other aspects that I think are sketchy. And ongoing at the state house right now with our head of finance and our representatives, you know, there are areas that can be worked upon, and I think you would agree, and my colleagues, that would affect the town of Bristol going forward. So it's good in concept, but again, with some major factors as a whole, is that what we're supporting when we support this resolution?
No, I understand. No, no, I understand fully where you're coming from.
I mean, you could just not support this and support the individual initiatives. I mean, like we just did with, you know, like, we don't like the taxes on the second homes. We don't want the mooring fees. So we've already done two, two topics that are, that are embedded in a funding plan. So, you know, there are other things that we could, we could look at and say, "Well, this is a great idea," but not do the whole thing. I mean, that's another way to just do it. Or, I mean, the administrator could do it and just not have the resolution from the council. I mean, that's appropriate, too.
Right. True. True.
It's actually, it's kind of interesting. If I had brought a tape recorder of another council meeting, the same exact points were made, and they decided to receive and file, basically, for exactly those reasons.
I think that we're, I think there's some good points here, and I want to be fair and not unkind, because there are some good points here. And they're rebuilding schools, and she's saying this 20 million. And it comes, my problem is I come back to the $764,000 less from the year before, you know? So I like the idea.
Right.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to be a hypocrite. I, you know, I want the municipal road and bridge program. We need it. You know, but just in concept, in a whole, I think that's our concerns.
Well, you could, you could write something like, I mean, it might be better to do nothing, but I mean, you could just also write something up that says, "Conceptually, we really love the idea of rebuilding your schools and this and that, but we have some serious concerns about how some of the funding would go. Like, we're not in support of this and this," for example.
Kind of a left-handed compliment.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if that's a good thing about. I don't know what's just better to do because you don't, you know, whatever, you want to be like, getting this money if it passes.
Yeah, you're right. Well, it's a good start. I mean, that's perfect.
That's why I said I didn't want to be ill-fated.
Well, Michael, can I ask you, what did your other councils think of the second point? Adding sources of municipal revenue. By closing certain tax loopholes, this budget secures additional dedicated revenue for the town's municipalities. Sounds to me that's going to be a way to extract some money from either our town or our businesses.
Again, the problem was that the way these initiatives would move forward would be at the expense of sources of revenue that have been taken away from the towns and/or, as you just mentioned, coming up with new ways of raising revenue. So it was the same type of difficult conversation. These are all worthy goals, but if they're going to ultimately hurt the municipality in the end, then we're not sure we should come out supporting.
Well, I mean, the point of this, of course, is to be able to go to the legislature and say, you know, "These initiatives are so important, and I have resolutions from 39 councils."
Of course. 39 councils have supported resolutions in the past that went nowhere in the General Assembly also, so.
Touche, sir. Touche.
But I mean, that's the point of this, you know, to a large degree.
So what's this council's want?
Tony, I thank you for the intent, but I could see no one wants to do this, so I'm going to make a motion to receive and file. And then we'll see what my colleagues say.
Is there any other discussion? How about a thank you? Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The, the next item, Mr. Chairman and members of the town council, also from the administrator regarding the town energy efficiency program.
Now, we can get behind this, so go ahead.
That's okay, I accept, I mean, that's why we're here, you know? I had a certain responsibility to the Governor, you know, if she wanted a communication to me to share with you, and it is what it is, and have a conversation, so, no problem. On this one here, we're talking about the Energy Efficiency Program. We had done Phase One, which was to provide just the buildings. This time was actually much more detailed, was to provide the number of employees, how many computers in each building, and so forth. And this particular item was strictly just for buildings. This was not for the street lighting or for the decorative lighting at this point. So now that they have all that information that are before them, they will be doing a study and then coming back to us with a recommendation as to what would be some of the efficiencies and things that we can do to conserve energy.
Fantastic. Tax dollars saved.
Yes.
And we need it, because we just went through a budget process, and one of the biggest factors with all the departments, I think you all agree, is utilities. So if we can have and go forward with these ideas, I think it's.
So this is one that will only save money and not spend any?
That's correct, yes.
We like it.
Well, there would be some saved money.
Let's just stop right there.
How's that?
Is that a motion?
Is there a motion to receive and file?
I'll make a motion to receive and file.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Also from the Administrator regarding the Visitor Center opening on May 22.
There have been some questions, I'm sorry, also, okay. There have been some questions as to when the visitor center was going to open and whether it was going to open or not. Yes, it will open, as you can see, May 22. Will be restructured a little different, will be managed directly by the Visitor Center, someone from the Visitor Center will be here, and will actually be a combination of volunteers and paid staff that will monitor the Visitor Center, and they will continue to operate from the Burnside Building.
Is this additional new staff or restructuring?
Well, the restructuring, they didn't particularly like the organization and how things were going, because in looking at the data, they found that it just didn't match up, you know? They expected that the numbers would have been higher.
Higher visitor numbers, is that what you mean?
The visitor numbers, yes.
Okay.
So they were not very comfortable how things were being run, I mean, were run, you know, managed as a whole. So they actually were contemplating closing here and opening up in the outskirts of the town by going to the Orban Society and Blightwell, but they reconsidered that, and they still can open here at the Burnside Building.
I think they would get more traffic, I mean, here than the other two outlets.
It depends how you look at it, the numbers. They are doing their homework, in fact, they're also considering a mobile visitor center, where they can actually go to, when there are functions, you know, attend those functions and make sure that they can distribute information related to the businesses as well as the, you know, the different locations to visit.
You'll excuse me, but who is "they"?
The Visitor Center in Newport.
Thank you.
Yes, no, no, very good point, right, just for clarification, because they, obviously, the ones that staff the building here as well.
Thank you. Is there a motion to receive and file?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And from Councilman Sweeney, request to schedule workshop regarding recycling. That's item I nine.
Thank you. Just wanted to talk to my colleagues about setting up a workshop for the ad hoc recycling committee to come in and submit their recommendations. We are in our third year. We have done a lot of outreach. We've done recycle days, amnesty days, attended special events for recycling. We've done a lot of education outreach, but the truth of the matter is, the recycling rates have been come up to where we'd like them to be. We need to drive, obviously, our large tipping fees after getting through this budget with $150,000, we need to drive those down. So the committee has been looking at ways we can do that, so, long and the short of it, I'll be short and sweet, we're looking to do a workshop on May 18. It's just a couple days before our council meeting, at 6:30. So I just didn't know what the pleasure was of my colleagues, if that would be okay with them.
I am absolutely fine with that, that makes sense to me. Our next meeting would be on the 20th, if I'm correct, our next regular council meeting on the 20th, so you're talking about Monday, May 18.
Correct.
At 6:30.
At 6:30, if that would be.
I will be here.
I can be here.
Great.
Yeah, that's fine.
Great. Mary?
Yeah.
Thank you. So with that, Lou, just, you'll go ahead and get that scheduled, and I'll just receive, submit, I'll make a motion to submit this, receive and file.
I would say to set the, to set the date for the workshop to be May 18 at 6:30 in the Town Hall, I hope.
Yep.
Was available. Did we check on the availability?
I did, I checked with Jen Wall, she said the 18th was available.
Okay. So motion to that effect.
So I have a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is from Beth Grove, the President of the King Philip Little League, inviting council to the opening day ceremonies on May 2.
We thank the President of the King Philip Little League for this invitation. I know I will be there, I hope my colleagues and Administrator will join us, so we can kick off this baseball season and have good weather, and I make a motion to receive and file.
Tony, do they get you to throw out the fist ball?
Ashley, no, somebody else is having the honor to do that.
I used to do that, and I loved doing it.
I know.
I did it better than Tom Brady did it at the Red Sox.
I was remiss, because I guess I said a lot about our Director of Recreation tonight, but yes, they will be honoring Walter at the opening ceremony, so.
Congratulations.
I told you it was the Walter Show, didn't we start off that way?
You better practice, Walter.
So I got a motion, I don't have a second to receive and file.
Second.
And a discussion?
Oh, yeah.
No, I just wanted to mention, I have an event at work, like a healthy, like a health fair that day, so I'm not going to be able to be there, so, going to congratulate you, so I won't have to remember to email you tomorrow, and if you ever speaks, if you can just convey my, you know, have fun thing there, because I won't be able to be there.
Mary says, "Have fun."
That's what I do, no, I say, "Play ball."
So there's a.
You don't want to hear us, you want to play ball.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, yes.
Any opposed?
I just saw it.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item from Roy Lefingwell regarding an invitation to an Eagle Scout Court of Honor for Connor McMullin on May 16.
You want to take them individually, Lou?
Yes.
I can, I can just also tell you that Mr. Lefingwell also invites you for an Eagle Scout Court of Honor on May 31 for Matthew DeWolf, and on June 7 for Brendan Barboza.
So with that said by the town clerk, we actually commend Connor McMullin, Matthew DeWolf, and Brendan Barboza. The list just keeps going on and on here in our community for Eagle Scouts, and it's such a commended accolade to give these young gentlemen, especially going forward in the future, so he'll be honored to attend these ceremonies, and I just acknowledge that we're in receipt of this and receive and file.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second, and I'd like to add, we are the epicenter of Eagle Scouts, and there is more than, I don't know, 50% of the US presidents have been Eagle Scouts, if my memory is correct on that? So I'm expecting one of them to be president one day, so buddy up to him now, so, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations to everyone, that's wonderful news.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, we have item I 14 from the Director of Community Development regarding the Tax Stabilization Application of Michael Camello of Blue Boulevard.
So this is in front of us, and obviously, as we all recall, earlier in the meeting, we were talking about redoing the Tax Stabilization Act. I would say that this would be appropriate to continue this until we resolve and come up with our updated Tax Stabilization Act, and I say it because this council found that we wanted a moratorium on new applications until it was updated. So it would seem appropriate that we should continue this until our new one is completed.
I'll make that motion to continue it, but I think it also should include a notification by the clerk to the petitioner explaining that we're not saying no, we're just saying wait a bit.
We are absolutely not saying no, we're saying wait.
Because we do have one that we said was going to go to move it along.
This is, this is.
This is that one.
This is that one, which is new.
I thought there was one that we had, like, a meeting or two ago, that we said we would continue, we would consider it, because it will take too long before the next one, before the issue is resolved, and this one was, there was some project in the, waiting to go in.
That is this one, that's the gentleman who spoke at your last council meeting, and he is going forward with his project. He did file for his building permit, and.
So he's taking the next steps to move forward?
Right.
Which doesn't mean that we shouldn't consider this.
Right.
Absolutely should.
Right, and in conversations with the solicitor, because he filed prior to his building permit, he was still eligible.
Under the old one. I think that we should go, I don't think it's fair to say we're changing the rules when he's already been moving forward.
Yeah.
You know, I don't think that that's fair to have somebody wait another.
Two businesses?
So many, you know?
No, this.
Whatever it could be, this could be months before we're done with the new project.
My concern, though, is, I hear that, and I think that's right thinking. The concern that I have, though, is that we said we had a moratorium. Was there other businesses that did not consider taking advantage of this? I don't know. We said we weren't going to take a new application until we updated this, so did we push others back or have other people not even consider doing this because we said we had a moratorium? And that's my concern with it, to be fair, and I also believe that whatever we come up with, I'm sure that we will consider him, this applicant right here, as we would with anything else, with fairness, so.
To that point, I think it's twofold to your comments, Mr. Chairman, is before the moratorium, if he had the application in and he can provide that, I think to Councilwoman Pirella's point, is we should be discussing it. If not, going forward, of discussion with our revamping of the tax stabilization and consider it of the conversation last meeting and the points that this council will take under review and go forward once the tax stabilization is approved by this council.
Right, so he was not in, he just filed recently. He was one of the businesses that actually came in, and I think it was last fall, and had his ordinance all highlighted with all of his questions and comments and, you know, clarifications needed, and we met, and I agreed with him that it was confusing, and I explained that it was actually in the process of being revised, and so he understood that it was not ready for him to make an application under, but enough time had passed, he thought, okay, we, you know, we should be there now, and he submitted, I think about a month ago.
That's right. Did I say that well, Michael? That if he had the paperwork before the moratorium that the council set forth, I think, I agree with the Councilwoman, that should be taken up, but hereafter, because of the revamping, and now tonight, we're going to revamp it again, he isn't under consideration, and we talked in depth about this application, and we should just take care of the tax stabilization going forward and then revisit this.
And not necessarily in kindness, but certainly in fairness, is that this wouldn't kick in until his building was complete anyway, so he's not losing out on quote-quote something. And again, kindness, not fairness, because there was and is a moratorium right now, or at least we stated that, so I think we should definitely move forward with it. I don't think we should let this go too long. That being said, I don't think he's in any undue bad place because of us taking some extra time.
Well, he is potentially, because if the, if we change it dramatically, like, say, it was 10 years, we go to five, or, you know, when you look at the others, or the amount of money changes, then it does make a difference if you go under the old plan or the new plan.
Fair enough.
Do you know what I mean, so?
I do.
I mean, I don't know if there will be, I'm just saying that, you know?
But I think, that's why I want a clarity on this legally, too, is, but he would fall under the perimeters of that umbrella if the application was done before the council had the conversation after the moratorium. Would I be correct in saying that?
He didn't put this in before the moratorium.
The council decided the moratorium, I think it was like last March.
Yeah. So this, he put his application in while the moratorium was already in effect.
We're having this conversation just so he understands also.
Oh, okay.
And we all understand. I know it sounds very confusing, but.
It's not, you're right. He put it in while the, while the moratorium was in effect, but I discussed and looked at with Diane, is that even though he's going forward with his project, because he filed the application prior to beginning his project and pulling a building permit, that whatever ordinance you come up with, he will be eligible. We won't be able to say to him, "It's too late, you've already built your building, we can't consider you." You will be able to consider his application one way or the other.
Wonderful. I think it would be frowned upon us as a council afterwards, which has been transpiring through this whole process.
Right.
Yeah.
So what's the, so what I'm looking for is a motion to continue.
I make a motion, we continue this item.
Until we can consider it with our new or updated tax stabilization.
So upon the council meeting with a second reading that might have a motion of approval, we can attach this continued item on that same meeting. That would be the most expediting process, instead of having it, I mean, maybe it doesn't pass.
Maybe it'll be administrative thing.
And I'll second.
That's a good point.
Second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, we have one bid, number 826, for consultant services for Health Equity Zone. There is one bid received from Randy Bell Hummer, and the amount of, that was a person of North Providence, Rhode Island, and the amount of $104,000.
What is a Health Equity Zone?
That was the good news, that Walter got that phenomenal grant. It's the Walter Show.
This is a partnership between the Department of Community Development, my work wife here, and Tanner and the Parkson Recreation Department. The town got a grant of $132,000, which was the first year of the grant. It's put out by the Rhode Island Department of Health, and it is to, in the first year, it's to bring together a coalition of all service groups and organizations that have impact on the health and well-being of the citizens of Bristol. It includes, well, there's, we've already done it with about 35 different organizations already, that is called the Thrive by Fire. The Community Center is going to be the health, I'm going to be the daily manager, Diane's going to oversee and make sure that I'm doing what I'm supposed to be doing, and we're going to be working in tandem with the Rhode Island Department of Health. The first year is to do an assessment and look at where redundancies are, where gaps in services are, working very, very closely with the Bristol Warren School District, the Food Pantry, Mosaic, Cozy, East Bay Community Action Program, Maria Racini in her capacity as Senior Director, and Substance Abuse. The list just goes on and on and on, but it's to tie everything together and make, and make action plans for year two, three, four, and five. Within, so we have four additional years of up to $400,000 each year, and this is going to make a huge impact in the quality of life. It's reaching out to our minorities, to our special needs, to our handicapped, to anybody that really misses services. We're going, we're going to be bringing on consultants that are Portuguese-speaking to reach out to the Portuguese communities, our places of, like St. Elizabeth's Church, and bringing resources to them, and it has to do with health, wellness, physical fitness, obesity issues, anti-smoking, it just, the list goes on and on. We're very excited about it. That's pretty much what it is, this bid is to hire a consultant to do that initial step of assessment.
Well, I would move that we convey the bid to the Town Administrator and all involved to act in the best interest of the town, and I would remark, since only one bid, if you're not satisfied with that particular bid, you're free to negotiate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thanks.
Nice job. Keep getting those $400,000 every year.
Next item, Mr. Chairman, members of the Town Council, some departmental reports as provided through the Office of the Town Administrator.
The Administrator didn't know I was going to say this, but I would like moving forward that we get these reports, I know we all look through them, but I'd like to maybe highlight one, we're not going to do it this evening, but moving forward, we can pick a department every meeting, or every time we get a report list, and allow them to kind of convey some of the things that are going on, some of the positive things, some of the challenges, just so we see it, but I don't think the community hears these things, and we are the, this isn't the town, we're all the town. So it'd be great to hear some more about what's going on in each department, and I've looked through them, and I know my colleagues did too, and we continue to, in fact, Chief Martin changed his format a little bit, yeah, I noticed, so, so, but I'd like to do that moving, not this one, but maybe next month when we have that, you pick the one that you'd like to highlight, and we can walk through that and just share some of the things that are going on with each department.
Certainly, because what I've tried to do is get them done quarterly, so that you get them all, but I fully understand what you're saying, and I think it's very important, because they do put in quite a bit of time, and there is quite a bit of work that takes place, that it's not highlighted, or at least it's, we made it aware to the public as a whole. It certainly shows all the multitasking and all the efforts that they put into. whole. It certainly shows all the multitasking and all the efforts that they put into their daily tasks. And obviously, it's reflected in their reports.
It makes the head of the department think about whether he's doing enough or what he should next be doing. I think it's a very good thing.
Great.
I'd like to thank you for the reports and thank all the department heads for all your hard work and efforts on behalf of the community and with that receive and file all the reports.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
And also the periodic report from Stacy Carter, which is item K2.
Also another motion to receive and file.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Next item is a request for executive session, which we'll take up at the conclusion of the public agenda. Now we have the individual council member agenda items, beginning with the chairman.
A couple of things. First, Charlie Enright's on his way here. Charlie's on his, on his Volvo Ocean Race boat, coming, coming this way towards Newport, which is just phenomenal. So, nice job. That's a Bristolian that, that's just another Bristolian that we could be proud of. I'm going to put it that way. Tomorrow is a huge day. It's Thursday, April 30th. And what does that mean? I think we have a website coming someplace.
What?
Yes. So tomorrow, at some point, I'm going to, no, I'm going to say at some point, because if we have some issues, then you can't say you told me at eight o'clock. But it's, it's a work in progress, that immense amount of work is going into, all the departments and people inside the departments. Julie, you need a special, oh my goodness. And Diane, you need an oh my goodness. And each department can talk about all the things that they put into it. But ultimately, it's going to come out tomorrow.
Excellent.
And we need your feedback. We need you to go on, check it out, bring suggestions back. There was an immense amount of work in the way it looks, and you know what I'm talking about tomorrow, the way it looks, why it's set up the way it is. There's a lot of things that we're going to be taking advantage of. Some of the things that's happened recently that this website's going to help us with is, we have a lot of local organizations trying to use calendars to figure out when they can do a clambake and all of that. This will be one thing that I'd love to see us be able to do with this, is a calendar that everybody can go to and say, hey, you're doing an event this night, I'll do it on another night. So, and then internally with the town, and more importantly, or as importantly, you'll be able to get information about a multitude of things depending on how we set up information. For example, street closings, school closings, trash pickup. And that's a wonderful one that you won't have to call anybody. Just go on and see, are you picking up my trash today? Because it was a holiday and I'm normally at this day or whatever. So wonderful information's coming. Go on, give us some feedback, tell us what you're doing. But thank you all for that immense, heavy lift on that.
It's huge.
LED equals roads. I wrote that down. What the heck am I talking about, right? We spend $360,000 a year, if my memory is correct, on Cobra lights. We spend 150 per, times how many we have approximately. And why I say it equals roads is that if we're able to get to the end of this wonderful place, which is being able to buy LED lights and save ourselves a whole bunch of money. Councilman Stewart's mentioned many times about the roads. We all get calls all the time. If we can save this money, maybe this will allow us a possibility of being able to do a bond and have that money to get the bond and do other things. But there's a lot of conversation that we're going to have about the roads. We're all getting calls and we should be getting calls. It's been a tough year and there's some really tough roads out there and they are not going unnoticed. But we need monies to do that and we don't want to unduly burden anyone, most, most of all, the taxpayers.
Well said.
Two more things. Flags. I talked to the town administrator recently. I drove by and I saw that the flags weren't up. And he had us a clear plan of how he put out the flags, why they go out, and they get ripped up pretty quickly out there in the, in the weather. I would like, if we could, because we are the town that is most patriotic, that if there's additional funds that you need to make sure that we have flags out there, as much as humanly possible, and if they need to be replaced or repaired and you need us to fund more money to do that, I can't think of something in regards to patriotism that's more important. So I certainly understand why you do it and it's because of the dollars. So if you, I would love you to come back to this council and say, we don't have enough to keep that flag out for another month and a half, because they get ripped up and they look horrible and they shouldn't be that way. So please reach out to us because I want to make sure that we have them out there all the time. They are now, yeah, absolutely. And they look wonderful, too. Last, we had a disappointing passing, anybody passing is disappointed, but Manuel Viera passed away. And actually, the chief, if you wouldn't mind coming up and just sharing a couple of things, I know he was a proud member of your department and a gentleman. So share a little bit with us, would you? Tell us, how long was he there? He was, what, 91 when you, 90, am I right with that, 91?
That's correct. He was 91 years old and we unfortunately had to lay him to rest today. But he was a wonderful father, grandfather, husband, and everything else. But in our department, after 60 years, he was our mother hen. There's nobody there today who didn't, is not influenced by him and his guidance throughout the years. Manny was a treasure. We put him to rest on his engine today, the 1934 Fox. And George Foster drove the truck and Manny brought him into the companies, into the companies 52 years ago. So it was a tribute to him, but everyone will miss it. He was a great man. And plus, he was a councilman for a while.
Yeah.
But he will be truly missed by the town and the fire department without question. He is the epitome of what we all want to strive to be as firefighters, for the community and a great man. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, chief.
Let me speak.
Thank you. I forgot one thing on that, is our hearts and thoughts go out to his family and his friends. And thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Sweeney.
Yes, spring is here. I just wanted to remind everybody about the Amnesty Day. It's going to be at the transfer station from 8:00 AM to 1:00. So start cleaning those basements out, closets out, bring that stuff up. The first 200 pounds is free. We're also going to be recycling quite a bit. So what you can bring is to be recycled is old electronics like TVs, along with your Styrofoam packaging. We'll be also recycling that, but no paint, unfortunately, not, not this time. We are going to do an Eco Depot Day or something like that. And we're going to, we're going to bring in paint, but not this time. But so 8 to 1 Amnesty Day. And finally, I just wanted to, a constituent reached out to me in regards to the street signs, Burton, Burnside, and Wally on High Street, the signs are missing. So, so I just wanted to bring that. I know Lou, you kindly helped me with, yeah, the street signs are missing.
And when are we going to be able to read them in the other direction?
Well, yeah. It's a good point. That's all I had. Thank you.
Actually, I want to share something real quick on that signage, is that Diane and I were talking about that recently. And if you remember, part of our budget includes some signage. So those things are going to get cleaned up. And I suggested maybe we have a free lottery for those signs. Those, if you're only coming, when you come from Providence, you know where you are. If you're coming from Newport, you have no idea where you are. So the ones, the Providence-facing signs, I'd love to give those, have a lottery for those. If some, if the townspeople are interested, I think it'd be a neat idea to get them out to everybody. So, thank you.
What signs are you talking about? The street signs?
The street signs, those, those black and white, uh, street signs.
Downtown ones?
Yeah, that we have.
The one that only half, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, I got it.
We care about you 50% of the time.
I'll take my address one.
Can we put them on a hinge?
Yeah. So I only have one, one question, and that is, if you go on the next agenda, or chief, you can give me your thoughts about it. I still read the news the other, you know, a couple of, like about a week or so, or over the weekend, maybe. The safety zone that Pawtucket had established for online purchases. And there, as you probably heard, they were, they're making, they have a pretty big parking lot in front of their building and, and in their lobby. And their rationale was that, you know, it would be a safe place because it's security, there's security cameras and so forth, because a lot of people are getting ripped off with, and they're selling things online. So if you go on Craigslist, you know, that's, you would be tempted to, I've, I've never done it, I would be tempted to, but I don't want to deal with like some stranger that you could just meet somewhere. So, you know, the people were getting ripped off, they were, you know, bringing money and they weren't getting goods, or they're getting beaten, whatever the case was. And it turns out, I was talking to somebody who does do a lot of that, and he told me that in Bristol, he always does the transactions at the Cumberland Farms, across the street from the police station. Anyway, because he figured that would be good surveillance and it would, you know, there's bank there as well. So I was wondering what your thoughts were about that.
There are several communities, actually, I believe Tivon Police was the first one that dug like that.
Were they?
And we wouldn't be opposed to anyone. That's a drop-off now for exchange for custody situations. They'll come in and take a child, turn it over to the, the mother or the father. We just don't want, you know, lodged things being brought into the parking lot, vehicles and things of that nature, and sit there for a period of time, for two or three hours while this individual is working his way down from Connecticut or somewhere else. But we would never be opposed to anyone pulling into the parking lot. And, you know, it's a safe place. Across the street to Cumberland Farms, I mean, there are cameras there because of the bank, Cumberland Farms, and we could zoom in if we had to. We, we would recommend that you go to any place like that. I tell my children that all the time. If, if something doesn't look right, you go to the nearest place where you feel there's a camera.
So I was like, I hadn't, I mean, I thought about it just in relation to, you know, whatever small amount of time I think about it myself.
Right.
But when I saw that on the news, I thought, oh, that's a really good idea. And, you know, so we should, I think if, if we're thinking about doing that, then we should maybe do it as a, like as a press release or as, you know, an announcement that that would be something or whatever. But I just thought I would bring it up.
If you could, would you give me the next council meeting, let me talk to Chief Blakie from Tivon.
Yeah, 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 definitely. I can't bring it up now.
Chief King from Pawtucket.
Yeah.
Let's make sure that there's nothing standing in our way. And if not, as I said, I would not be opposed to it.
Yeah, we'd like to put it on another, on the future agenda for you to think about. I'm not asking you now. I just, I'm just, you know, wondering about, about the thoughts of me. So, so if Lou could, you put that on. And that's all I have right now.
Mr. Stewart.
I'd like to really reiterate what the chairman had said. My condolences to the Viera family. Also, I'd like to thank my colleagues, the administration, department heads through another budget cycle. And it's always interesting and we do our best. And also, this coming Friday, I believe it's May 1st, I'd like to congratulate our colleague, Timothy Sweeney, who will be accompanied by, being honored by the Newport Resource Women's Center at the Hotel Viking at 6:30, along with other Bristolians that will be honored, such as past vice chair David Barbosa, Keith Maloney, Christopher Wooded, and Ryan Fonseca. So congratulations on that honor of men who make a difference in their community. On the same night, just a couple advertisements, maybe I don't have to do this going forward with our new website, but just to reiterate, because we have so many important groups and I feel this is one of them that gives the ample opportunity, especially when you hear stories lately, 24/7 from Baltimore of ample opportunities for young children and the community string project here in our community, they give that opportunity to young children and give them the tools and instruments they need, but not only children, but for adults. And they have their Spring for Strings at the Linden Place, Gatsby Style, this coming Friday also at 7:00, if you're interested in, in supporting that group. Also, let's see, Sunday, May 3rd, Habitat for Humanity. It's been an ongoing project here on Center Street for the family. And if you would like to support that foundation, which I ask everybody in the community, it's a great effort. That is 5 to 7 at Red Lefferson's and it's $35. And you can go to habitateastbayri.org for more information on that event. Going forward for events, the following Saturday, Bristol Warren Education Foundation has the annual 5K. You could go to their website to find out, because I know there's a lot of interest and input from a lot of our people from Bristol in tandem with Warren. So just go to their website. And with that, Keep Bristol Clean, along with Amnesty Day, 9:00 at the Department of Public Works. If you could give a hand, whether it's an hour, two hours, help out to clean up our town, we appreciate that. And also, I extend a Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. By the time we have our next meeting, we just wish you the best on, on your Mother's Day. And as the chairman said, I don't want to steal my friend and councilor, Haverthorff's thunder, but I always promoted his efforts at the museum before, so I'm going to do it again. May 5th through the 9th, we have a great spectacular event coming into Newport, and we have a great relationship with Newport to support our own Bristolian, as the chairman said, Charlie Enright, who's skippering. And we hope he comes sailing in at first. But also, the Haverthorff Museum, it's kind enough to have Charlie on the 11th at 6:00 for a discussion. If you would like to hear that discussion, go to the Haverthorff Museum. So we thank you for entertaining that. It's a great effort. And I just thank everybody who came out tonight, everybody tuning in at home. Thank you, Mike Davis. And I'm going to go out of my way to go outside my protocol and thank the Sergeant of Arms, especially in these times that we're, we're living in. He has, he's in back having our, our protection, Archie Mans. So thank you and good evening.
And if you don't want to go on the new website to clear a date for an event, just call Councilman Stewart. He'll, he'll tell you if the date is free.
Social secretary. Very nice.
Well, there's just a lot of efforts by many community groups that we talk about, so we have to support them. So.
Mr. Harrisaw.
Well, I'd like to just add a little something to what Nathan and Eddie have said about the Volvo Ocean Race and the fact that Bristol is so honored that the only American skipper in that is our own Charlie Enright from Burton Street in Bristol. And it's fitting to have this great seafaring, seafaring town representing America in the, in the Volvo Ocean Race. He is on the way from Brazil to here, along with all the other competitors. He's sometimes been ahead in that leg and sometimes behind two or three boats. I haven't checked on him today. But they're all coming in this coming week. And then they're going to be here for various events, including the one at the museum. And then they're going to have an inshore race of the boats on the 6th, on the 16th of May. And that's a Saturday. I think it'll be inside the bay. And then on the 17th, Sunday, they're going to depart from here for Europe for the next to last leg of the race. And I don't know whether those of you who don't sail may appreciate the competition that it is. It's a very grueling competition to sail around the world, pressing the boat, sometimes going 25 knots, sometimes in very cold and wet weather. When you see the pictures of what they've done in some of these lectures, you're going to be amazed at it. And you're either going to wish you were there or be glad you weren't there.
Happy you weren't there. Yeah, there you go.
One or the other. But it's a great honor for Bristol that Charlie is in charge. And he's proven himself to be not only a great sailor and engineer, but a great leader. And I hope he does it again and wins next time. I'd just like to mention briefly a couple other things. This week, the wastewater treatment plan, I guess you've changed some of the RBCs.
I was there.
Do you want to, just give us a little bit of a story on what that involved is and why we do it?
Certainly. The obesity units that we have at the treatment facility, there are 24 of them and it is our secondary process. They are approximately 30 years old. Their lifespan is, should be 20. We've, we've got our lifespan out of them and more so. But we are replacing them as the funding comes available. We had three installed this week. That brings us to nine. We have another 15 to do. We are hoping that by 2019, we will have completed the replacements of them all.
I didn't visit it this week, but I have seen it previously and it's an amazing thing. Huge cranes. These items are tremendous. And so far, so good. You haven't had any of them slip and fall or anything like that?
We've had a few that have broken down the aged ones and...
No, but I mean, in putting the new ones in, you've had.
No, no, it's been a smooth operation, very smooth.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, I'll also mention that I've been trying to give some advice to the Maritime Center about some details of their arrangements. And I think I might be a little too late, but at least I'm trying to make the men's and ladies' room a little bit more spacious if they can only do it. But sometimes you give advice, it's taken. Sometimes you might be too late. And then, on a lighter note, I'd like to mention something I'm going to undertake, which I hope the chairman will find amusing.
It's not flagpoles, is it? It's not flagpoles, is it?
I've been reading lately, uh, George Washington's 107 Rules of Civility. He wrote them when he was not quite 16 years old. He didn't actually invent them all because he referred to some literature, particularly from England, of course, where civility is considered important. But they, uh, range to all aspects of human behavior, uh, grooming, manners, uh, intellect and all the rest. So, um, with the indulgence of the council, I'm going to read one or two of these at every meeting from now on, and you might find them, uh, inspiring, you might find them educational, and you might even find some of them amusing, because they're poignant, they're brief, they're constructive, and I think George Washington's ideas are timeless. So stand by for the first two on, uh, May 20.
Oh, I thought you were going to do them now!
I just wanted to tempt you tonight.
I was just deciding to get that book for somebody. I was going to, well, I'll find out.
All that, and we're not getting two of them.
Well, I want you to be hungry.
Wait, wait, wait. Uh, are you going to wear a white wig when you, you recycle?
What's that?
Are you going to wear a white wig when you recycle?
Well, that's a thought. Maybe I should. Do you have one I can borrow?
No.
That's rule number one. You've got to wear a white wig.
Maybe that's rule number one, yeah.
Finally, among the public agenda is the town administrator agenda.
Uh, yes, um, just clarifying a little bit, I know we, we, uh, mentioned Amnesty Day and also Earth Day. Amnesty Day being May 2nd and Earth Day being May 9th. I know we sort of blend into two there for a minute, just for a point of clarification on that. And, um, but as Councilman Stewart pointed out, on May 9th, Earth Day, if folks are willing to come out and, uh, help clean up certain areas of town, just report to the, uh, Department of Public Works on Monhope Avenue, and they will provide you gloves and, uh, bags, and even give you some coffee and some donuts, you know, to charge you up so that you can carry on, uh, the cleaning up. Um, the, before I go on, actually, Chief Canario has some information to share regarding child safety, so I'll let him go on.
Very quickly, uh, the Bristol Warren Regional School Department, uh, along with the Rockwell School staff, has a Wellness Fair Day. Uh, it's going to be Saturday, May 2nd, I guess it's a busy day, from 9:00 to 12:00 PM at the Rockwell School at 1225 Hope Street. There'll be Child Safety Seat Clinic, which will be provided by the police department, child fingerprinting, a blood drive, and all kinds of other information on child awareness, um, events. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Um, also, uh, this week, actually, two days ago, um, there was quite a bit of collaboration between Compos. We had our own train, uh, our own, um, not train, uh, to drop the, uh, the docks into the bay. What do you call that?
Crane?
Crane, thank you. Train, crane. Okay. It rhymes, doesn't it? Um, we had two of our employees from Compos work with the Harbor Master, and, uh, one of the assistants to drop all the docks there had already been repaired. They did a pretty, pretty good job, a great job, actually, um, and they dropped them in, pretty much all of them in place. They just have to do some attachments and, uh, connect, uh, electricity and water to them. Uh, once that's done, they're back to, to full function and, uh, ready to take in all the boats that will, should be dropped in very soon as the weather warms up. Um, and, uh, last, last but not least, my condolences goes to our battalion chief, as it was already pointed out, our battalion chief, James Maderas, I mean, James Viera, uh, whose father passed away.